It's the November 8 meeting of the Situate Planning Board. I want to make an addition to the agenda and then move for acceptance. Under Old Business, New Business, I want to talk about the Water Resource Protection article for the annual company, or the special company. You can add that in under Old Business and New Business. I would then be looking for a motion to accept the agenda.
I so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. So at 7:30, the first item on the agenda is the informal discussion of a flexible open space subdivision plan for 305 Country Way. They're looking to put a four lot subdivision on a little over six acres. Greg, I want to introduce you to the evening.
Sure. Good evening. My name's Greg Morse, I'm a registered engineer, Morse engineering. With me from my office is Jeff Hassett and the applicant Doug Sheeran is with us. This is the preliminary hearing for a proposed flexible open space development, proposed at 305 Country Way. What we're proposing here is a four lot subdivision. And what I want to do is go over the existing site. I'll show you our conventional yield and I'll show you our flexible open space layout. So, in looking at the plan, the plan that's on the board, this is the conventional density sketch plan. And what you'll see is, this is Country Way off to the east. To the north, we have developed residential property. To the south, we have developed residential properties. To the west, we have a wetland that's on our site. This ultimately is a wetland that's tributary to the reservoir, which is off the plan further down here. There's an existing house on this property. You'll see the existing house number 305. There's an existing driveway, barn. We have approximately 200 feet of frontage along Country Way. The front half of the site, from here, the pen toward Country Way, this is the R2 zoning district. The rear half is the R1 zoning district. The wetland is shown in blue. This is a bordering vegetated wetland. We just had that flagged this past fall. That's in front of the Conservation Commission for review right now. Topography, generally the land slopes from Country Way. At the high point, all of this land slopes to the rear, to the wetland area. We've conducted soil testing on the property. We've had great perk test results. We've done perk tests, kind of scattered throughout the property, all witnessed by the Board of Health, all passing, no problems for septic systems on this. In total, this is an eight and a half acre piece of property. And to be applicable under the flexible open space, you're required to have a minimum of 160,000 square feet of upland on your property. This property has 187,000 square feet of upland area. So, in looking at the flexible open space, we first develop a conventional density plan. What you'll see is that we're proposing a roadway. The roadway is approximately 220 feet in width. And we're providing frontage and area for four lots off of that. All of the frontages are taken off of the proposed road. There were no waivers that we see or need in developing this Road A. All of the lots comply with the 40,000 frontage, or area requirement within the R1 district. The lot that's in the R2 district complies with the 20,000 square foot frontage for What we would propose to do is build this plan, this is the flexible open space layout. And with this flexible open space, what you'll see is, you'll see that the areas in green we're proposing as the open space component, we're proposing an open space here, 272,000 square feet of that 78,000 is upland area. The access way is generally the same as you'd have with a conventional subdivision, but we're proposing a reduced width right of way, reduced width roadway. It's a little bit shorter in area, it's approximately 190 feet long. Would provide access to the four new lots. Lot one is the existing house. Lots two, three, and four are the new houses. For all the drainage with this, because of the topography, what we were proposing to do was provide swales along the edge of the pavement to come down. And then we would have some sort of overflow with a catch basin device to recharge basin at the rear of the property. The soils here are excellent for infiltration. The swales will provide TSS removal along the roadway. As stated, the green, we've provided a open space buffer all the way around the perimeter. So we have a no disturb buffer zone against all of the abutting residential properties. We're maintaining a buffer zone along Country Way. The only area we're utilizing along Country Way here for our access is where the existing access for the house currently is. So we're maintaining the, basically the view of what you'll see when you drive by on the Country Way roadway. Under the bylaw, Section 550, we're required to have a preliminary meeting with you prior to doing our definitive filing. That's the purpose of this, is to get your feedback preliminarily on the layout, answer any questions and any comments that you have, so that we can address them and incorporate them into our definitive design.
Laura?
The purpose of this section of the bylaw, that this development is being proposed under Section 550, flexible open space, it's to preserve the natural and cultural resources of the town. And I think when you hear that, you think of some kind of grand plan, but actually, you know, you're really just dealing with a small piece of land, so it's on a somewhat small scale. And this property does have some resources. It has a house that was built in 1710 or 1720, you know, according to different sources. And if they do the flexible, it looks like there's a better chance that would be preserved, which would be, you know, a nice thing for the town. And the flexible also allows a lot of open space to be preserved. I'm not sure if you want to look at maybe having a little more preserve on the south side. There's just a little thin strip there. Maybe there's some way to plant that and make that, you know, longer for, you know, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if that's something that's going to be important in the ultimate scheme of things, but it just looks like there, you know, several others on that side, so it might be, might be a nice thing to do. But basically, it looks like a good, a good choice for this piece of land.
Okay. Richard?
So yeah, my question, I think you kind of answered it, was just that the intention is to preserve the house on Lot 1?
Well, right now, we have it so that the house would comply with the setbacks. It is in pretty tough shape. I can't guarantee that we're going to keep it, but it does, it would comply with all of the setbacks. I think we, my applicant just purchased the property. I don't know if he's done a thorough analysis on whether or not it would come down or not.
The property also has a new septic system that was recently installed, and that can be preserved as well.
That's the leaching field over to the, on my map, kind of down to the left. Okay. The other question I just had was, I know for a lot of these flexible open space plans, we have a public or a community component. As Laura mentioned, you know, preserving the open space is a huge factor. But are there any other ideas that you've explored about, like for a trail? Or, I mean, I don't know what this connects to, or if there's other, if you could actually have a trail back to that area, or a sidewalk? I don't know if this actually is in the area of the sidewalk that's proposed for Country Way, is it, Laura?
Um, I'm not sure.
No, it's farther, it's farther up towards Shones.
So, so I guess, my thought was that, obviously, I think, you know, having the flexible open space, preserving the land is a huge benefit. I just was curious to see if there were other things that could be incorporated that wouldn't be too crazy, such as potentially a trail or a sidewalk. Those types of amenities, we've typically done in the past for these kinds of developments.
The current proposal doesn't have any trails or sidewalks in it, just because there's no sidewalks along Country Way. But I mean, I think we'd certainly be open to maybe doing a trail through the open space pieces of this property, something we could probably incorporate fairly easily.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think I have any other particular questions. Dan?
Yeah, that was my main question about the public access piece of it. I'm not quite sure what else is in the area. I think most of that area behind the property is wetlands and restricted and that. So it may be something that, like, long-term could be tied into something else. I don't know what else is there right now, probably not much. But I'd like to preserve that opportunity anyway. I'm not sure about putting in a trail right now, or just making sure that when we approve it, we make sure there's a public access component to it, maybe in the future, to do something with it. And then at the end of the cul-de-sac, the crosshatch green area, I'm not understanding, what is that? The circle?
That's area within the cul-de-sac, or within the right of way, that in the flexible open space scenario, wouldn't be developed. So basically, if you look at the...
Oh, I see, okay.
You know, in a standard subdivision, we'd have to clear all the way up to the outside of the pavement. Over, in this scenario here, we're proposing a hammerhead turnaround.
I see.
So it preserves that much more.
So it's just for calculation?
Just for calculation. And that area is currently vegetated as well.
That makes sense. And you're showing, I guess, the house on Lot 4 is within the 100-foot buffer, so you'd have to go to Con Common, deal with that. These are all, and you're showing, these have the septic fields, I see. So that one's in front, outside of the 100-foot, on Lot 4?
Yeah, all of the septic systems are outside the 100-foot wetland buffer zone. You're right, a portion of the house, the lot 4, is in the 100-foot buffer. Typically, Conservation has a 50-foot no disturb. The project complies with that 100 percent. All of the roadway is outside of Conservation's 100-foot buffer zone.
Okay. I guess on that one, I guess when we get to that point, I just want to pay attention to the drainage and everything in that area, the drainage plan, and make sure that's really well thought out with the driveway and everything, and try to minimize that as much as possible. But I don't see an issue with it. I mean, it looks like a nice plan, so I think the public access, we can maybe talk about more, what makes sense. I'm not, not positive based on where it's located on Country Way, that even if there were a trail there, and you wouldn't, anybody would use it, versus just preserving the opportunity down the road for some, you know, master plan of that open area to come in and put something there in the future. You know, that's more what I'm thinking of, because there's nowhere to park here and...
In the, in the grand scheme, if you zoomed out, this abuts on the back piece here, the bonger zone land, which is essentially, a lot of it's all undeveloped land off of Williamsburg Lane.
Right.
And so, you know, it is part of a bigger piece that's behind us.
Yeah, and a lot of that's restricted now, I think. So I'm, maybe when you come back in, or maybe we could look at that, maybe an aerial of what else is there, so we get a better feel for what long-term opportunities might be there. That's all I have.
Okay. Bob?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, if we could see a little bit of a, sort of macro of this area. And also include houses along the southern property line, even if they're only located from the tax assessors map, just to get a feel for how close they are, where their backyards are relative to your property and the proposed clearing, that kind of thing.
Even just like a Google Earth or something like that, zoom out?
Yep.
You want to see it?
Good to see.
What's that? Said, "Do you want to see it right now?"
Yeah.
Oh, you electronic geniuses. No, no, uh, no, I think it's a good plan, too. I very much like the idea. I know what you mean about the house, I've looked at it. It's a neat old house, but it's got, it's in tough shape, yeah. The barn's kind of neat, but that's in tougher shape.
Yeah.
But yes, I think basically, this is a good use of that property. I know that several years ago, it was, a subdivision similar to this one was proposed on the, on the, on the land.
Yeah, but yeah, back, back in 1989, this, the Situate Planning Board did approve a three lot subdivision on this property. It was never constructed.
Right.
But, you know, a couple of other things I just want to point out, and I'll, I'll submit these calculations, this letter for the record, but, you know, under a conventional development of this property, you look at, we would estimate, we're going to have approximately 31,000 square feet of impervious under a conventional layout. With the flexible open space, we're down to just under 20,000 square feet. So it's a 30 percent reduction in impervious surface. That also goes with lawn surfaces as well. Under a conventional layout, like the plan behind this one, we calculated approximately 120,000 square feet of lawn, just because of the larger areas and more disturbance. With the flexible open space, we'll be around 83,000 in total. So it's that much less fertilizer, that much less disturbance. It's pretty much a 30 percent reduction in impervious surface and clearing and lawn surface.
I'll finish up here in a little while.
Bill, I just had one other question.
Go ahead.
And I don't know the answer to this, but is this a common driveway in any, in any sense?
The, the roadway itself, you know, would act as a common driveway. It's not a common driveway that would have to be permitted under the bylaw, because technically Road A is a, is a right of way.
Okay.
We thought about the option of filing for lots two and three having a common driveway, so you don't have two driveways right next to each other.
Yeah.
And we may incorporate that in the final design.
Yeah, that would cut down your impervious somewhat. And at least, if that happened, as it necked into the main roadway, it would be a little bit less asphalt, you know, all in one place, which might be a nice thing.
Absolutely.
If you decide not to do that, it might be a good idea to slightly reconfigure it so that there's a reasonable island between those two driveways that could be planted out.
Yeah, we'll take that into consideration.
Okay, I'm good.
Just, in terms of the open space, particularly this strip along the, sort of south, you said southeast corner there, how wide is that?
That's a 10-foot strip.
That's a 10-foot strip. And is it intended to be like a, a strip that you would maintain, or is it, I mean...
No, I think it's a strip that we would try to leave natural. I think that southern property line there, for the most part, is a, is an old stone wall. And then we'd, we'd leave the natural vegetation, you know, within 10 feet of that stone wall. I think that might even be 15 feet wide. We could enhance that area, too, if it's thin in areas.
It just looks like a pretty small little, I mean, obviously, the scale makes it, looks like, look like that, too.
It's actually, right, it's a 15-foot wide.
Well, I kind of mirror Robert's comments here about the two driveways, if you can do something with those. Because it does look like you've got a couple of, you've got two strips of asphalt side by side there. The other thing is, and you'll probably have to address this with the Conservation Commission, is the other driveway, it looks like it comes into that 100-foot buffer area. So to the extent you can stay out of that or minimize that impact.
Sure.
But I think overall, it looks like a, a nice plan. It'd be nice to get more buffer on, on the south side, but I suppose you're probably limited by the, by the buffer zone on the wetlands, too.
Yeah, on the north.
Yeah, with, with the lots, primarily the lots are right around the 20,000 square foot area, so, you know, I don't think we want to cut them down much more for fitting a house plus a septic and a reserve. But we can certainly look at maybe reconfiguring some of the shapes of them and look at the buffers.
And the drainage still exists down at the bottom here. This is going to be a basin of some kind.
Yeah, some sort of planted basin.
How close, looking at Google Earth, that, that street that's the cul-de-sac, across the street, is it Black Rock Terrace?
Black Beach.
Black Beach. How close is that to the, what you have as opening, or the entrance?
It's di, it's directly across the street.
Oh, it is, okay.
We've lined those intersections up.
It looks like there's a house there that would, or a garage that would have to be demolished.
Yeah, there's a barn.
It's an old barn.
Right here, that's, yeah, pretty tough.
Okay, so you were right, that is the house.
How do the grades work out? Do you have to clear cut this, or can you leave some trees, depending on, you know, what might...
For the most part, the, all of the area proposed for the road is already cut. It's already clear cut, it's kind of maintained as field.
Right.
So I don't think there'll be any clearing for that.
Right here.
Yeah.
Back, back in here where the houses are, we'll be cutting for the houses. But for the, for the actual road construction, all of the area that we're working in is already cleared.
Okay. And you don't have to markedly change grading throughout the parcel to, to get things to work?
I, I don't think so. We might have to provide a little bit of leveling area at the top, you know, just at the intersection. But otherwise, everything's graded now, real nice drainage where we want it to go, so.
Obviously, my efforts to stealthfully conceal my car to this floor.
You should have grown smaller then.
I just have one little question, and that's the, the hammerhead turnaround at the bottom of the cul-de-sac.
Yep.
Fire service do you have any issues with that, in terms of accommodating their apparatus?
Well, we'll, we'll certainly do the, the auto turn calculations to show that, that Situate's apparatus can fit there. But that's basically the same layout that, you know, has been reviewed and approved before, with like the Dream Wild Estates development that was just done here, you know, 2003, 2004. So, we'll, we'll revise it as necessary, but it's pretty close to that layout.
And it looks like the top of that, I mean, not the, the green part of the cul-de-sac, which would not be built, there'd be the, the hammerhead. Like directly, at least according to this, it almost looks like just beyond those trees is the other, the neighbor's pool?
Yeah, that's why we really want to preserve that area as well.
Yeah, okay.
I was wondering, too, if maybe in the front of the site, now that we're seeing it on Google Earth here, there's a lot of, it looks like large mature trees in the front and along the sides, and I wonder if there's a way to maybe expand the open space a little bit to capture some of that, maybe follow the contours a little bit more of what's there now, assuming they're in good shape? I don't know.
Yeah, there, there is one that I, I'm pretty, pretty confident that we're going to preserve this, you know, probably in excess of 36 inches. So we'll be able to preserve that with this type of layout.
Yeah. Just wondering if you could actually expand the open space outline, though, you know, come in a little bit from the Country Way side, and then also, we're talking about the south, you know, the strip. If there's a way to kind of maybe capture some of that natural vegetation, expand it a little bit into those areas. It does, I do see how it's cleared now around the existing house, and it does look like most of that driveway. It looks like the clearing will be towards the back of the site, or the...
Bill, do you want to just pass this down?
Are there mature trees along that strip?
Yeah, you want to take a look at this?
There are a couple, yep.
Because that's, one of the concerns that I have, is that I think the open space would not only provide open space, but I'd like to see it as a buffer maintained, as an existing buffer, instead of proper here and down along that side.
Where are we?
Here's Country Way. On this, this is the house.
Yeah, but there is a fair number of mature trees up at the front. And I really didn't get a sense, because I didn't walk down to the back of the trees, how many there are along that open space.
This is the house, right?
Yeah. The house is right...
Oh, we're on the wrong side.
Yeah, I don't know. Right here.
It's over here.
Oh, yeah, okay, right, yeah, okay, yeah.
There's the pool on your side.
Yeah, 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 got it.
So this is where they're, this is where they're proposing coming in, right here off of this?
Let's bring it back to the same meeting.
Line it up with Black Beach. That's my brother-in-law's house right there. I know this place.
Coming back, so that's the concern that I have, is rather than making it straight 15 feet, if you can make it irregular as it goes along, just so that we maintain the, maintain the existing buffer there. The other thing is, I think that, I'd like to see to make sure the fire department is satisfied with it, because I, I'm not sure how far it is from where the shaded cul-de-sac is down at the bottom of the house, but it would probably enable 600 feet.
Yeah, from the, from the cul-de-sac to this house back here is 260 to that corner board. There's one hydrant upgrade at the corner of the property on Country Way, we'll obviously extend one down. So I mean, typically, the planning board, or the fire department is within 500 feet. We'll be at 260 with this layout.
Okay, so as long as, as long as he's comfortable with it.
Yep.
And then the comment about looking to see whether you get a sheer driveway or a common driveway, I think would, would really go a long way. And I think, obviously, I think it'd be cheaper to construct, and I think it's less impervious than what utilizes site better.
This one's right in the front, you're like...
The building, the existing house is up there, I think it's, it's an existing house, and I don't think it's much more than that. It's a pretty, just, from the exterior, looking at it, it's a pretty tough shape. I haven't seen, I haven't been inside it in a while.
I have, actually.
Oh, I have?
Yeah.
I think that's pretty much where I'm coming from. And I, I think there's plenty, it's kind of, the comment I had was on the site distance, but I don't see that. Shouldn't be a problem in either direction.
I don't, I don't think it's going to be a problem in either direction, but we can provide the counsel.
They just want to just check that and make sure.
Are you talking on Country Way?
Yeah.
Yep.
But my concern is that you're up at the point where it's the narrow part of Country Way.
Yeah.
You're leaving a lot of vegetation there, so it might...
There's a little bit of a bend as you come to the south. Country Way bends around to the, to the west a little bit more.
And then, I'd be concerned about the size of the basin that we're putting down. I don't want to see another Elm Street.
Neither do I.
And it's literally, the only thing, difference between that and the football field is the football field stripe. So whatever you can do to minimize that, and if it means, you know, doing something and treating the drainage, is it's coming down along that roadway or whatever, that would be a preferred way of doing it.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Anything for the public? Okay.
Great. Well, we'll be going in front of Conservation, you know, to solidify that wetland line, and as soon as that's taken care of, we'll be making our definitive submitted to you.
Terrific.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Just saying, we're going to have to cut a hole in here.
I was wondering why Richard was so anxious to come to the other side of the...
How are you?
We need a large screen to put up on the back, so that when you...
So that we know what we're looking for.
You know, so we need Google the Earth, and we can...
Oh, oh, that.
I was, during, they'll have the, right on their desk, they have a...
They have a techno screen. Oh, yeah. No, they do that in Wellesley, too. Every member has a, has their own laptop. Provided by the town? Uh, yes. They don't get to take it home.
You do get to, or you don't?
No, you don't. I, I suppose if you're doing town business, you could, yeah, I mean, why not? We have a digital projector here, don't we? So we, yeah, so we could, you know, we could project right there on the, on the wall.
Yeah, particularly if we have wireless.
Well, Richard, is there wireless here?
Let's go, Richard.
There is, but Laura won't give me access.
I think it's a permission. You need to ask her to get logged in.
Yeah, yeah.
That one away with our keys.
I'm now going to call it 8 o'clock. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for accessory dwelling special permit to 33 Garden Road. You're the applicant. Reintroduce yourself, we haven't seen you for about a month or so.
Yeah, my name is John Townen, I'm with Saint Cassimoule, I'm here with my customer, Mark Geno, who's the owner at 33 Garden Road. Yeah, proposal, as you probably recall, is a accessory dwelling.
Can we turn that so that, if you people had a chance to take a look at it? Okay. That's good.
Changes have, have obviously been made to the plan to have the suggestion of the board and, and the neighborhood to attach the accessory dwelling to the existing structure, as you see in the rendering there in autumn, and also in the air. So I'm just going to go through some of the, a lot of the particulars really haven't, you know, changed too much as far as the square footage and things of that nature, but I'll go through and to refresh the record on that. The size of the accessory dwelling is 31 and a half feet by 23 feet, 8 inches, or 745.6 square feet. Existing structure is approximately 1,090 square feet, finished space. Deck size on the proposed accessory dwelling has been reduced to nine foot five by five six, total of fifty-two square feet. As you know, the customer, Maria, has submitted an affidavit confirming that she will occupy the property. Existing parking on your site plan showed on the right-hand side will remain. That is approximately eighty-three feet long by ten feet on average, and width, the width does vary. Goes back towards the garage. The new parking accommodations are on the left side of the proposed addition. And that parking area is fifty-five feet long by twelve feet wide, which can accommodate up to four cars. The existing home is three bedrooms, one bath, and the accessory dwelling is two bedrooms and one bath, and it's on town sewer. The proposal has been reviewed with the building commissioner, the DPW, water health, conservation, water department, and the other pertinent departments, and all have responded fairly to it. The proposal itself is designed to meet the criteria and the purpose of fifty-three, five thirty point one, five thirty point two. And it also meets all the required dimensions and regulations of the zoning bylaw as far as setbacks are concerned. The, as I mentioned, the plan and layout have been amended, as you see there, to show the accessory dwelling being attached to the existing. And I think that clearly addresses the concern that was voiced at the last meeting or with the previous submittal for this accessory dwelling project. I would like to say that we have had distributed letters to the concerned parties that were at the initial meeting for this property and to, you know, discuss further. And I think decided to take that opportunity for tonight. So, if you have any questions for myself or Maria?
We're all set right now. Laura?
Uh, this is a, the application, the first application was submitted in June, and the applicant withdrew it in August of this past year. The reason being that I think there was a lot of discussion about how these structures really worked with lots in terms of some of the bylaw. Some of the criteria in the bylaw are very kind of objective, like the seven hundred fifty square feet, two heartens bases. Other criteria are more subjective. The bylaw wants the accessory dwelling to be designed so the appearance is, you know, they say unchanged as much as feasibly possible from the original. And I think the way, the way that's done sometimes is by orienting the building so that if there's an addition, it's just sort of blends with the house, it's the same style, you know, the same, the windows are in the same plane, and that type of thing. And then there's also a criteria that the accessory dwelling be a subordinate part of the single-family dwelling, and that's another one that's really subjective. It's just something that the board has to, um, there's a judgment about. So, I think, given that the primary dwelling is only a thousand, a little over a thousand square feet, and the accessory is, you know, almost seven hundred fifty square feet, they're, they're a sort of comparable size. It's kind of a challenge just to do this, but, you know, I don't know how to fully sort of look at it, so. I also wanted to mention that the water department did want the water service upgraded. The access services that are now is, is like a three-point reach, and we wanted to arrange.
It's all right.
Richard, I'm gonna give you a break. I'm gonna start at the other end.
Yeah, it's all right.
You're up, sir.
I'll let Eric, because you guys have been involved in this for a while. I'd like to hear what you guys have to be talking about.
Laura, did you say, did I hear correctly that the main, the main structure is about a thousand square feet?
A thousand thirty-two, like, that's what you said.
Yeah, the, I believe the assessors card says one thousand ninety.
Okay, well, as I read five thirty point two sub F, it looks like as big as you can go is about four hundred square feet on your accessory dwelling. Am I missing something?
It can go, it's the greater of forty percent or seven hundred and fifty, I think.
That's right, yeah, I confirmed that with.
And are you at seven fifty then, right now?
Seven forty-five point six.
My, my other question is, you know, hearing what Laura had to say, is that. I would like it, and I don't, it may be what I'm looking at is just sort of, you know, a static kind of a thing. But, you know, I see the original dwelling, it's got one, two, three, five windows across the front and a door. I see two windows. It kind of looks, pardon me for saying this, but kind of like a shed that's been attached. I don't know whether or not there's something that could be done architecturally to make it look more like the other building or to sort of, you know, incorporate it in a more pleasing way. But that's my, and it is, you know, it's as big as you can go, clearly. But those are, those are my thoughts at this point.
Um, I guess one of the things I'd ask would be, is there going to be, or do you contemplate work on the existing building as a part of the project?
Yes, the existing tenants in the existing building have been notified that, you know, they're just to find other housing. And the plan is to build the, if approved, the accessory dwelling so that Maria can renovate the existing structure. And also, you know, bring it up to the newer quality that the addition will be.
Good, okay. I think that's, that's important. I appreciate what Eric says. I think you've got to remember though, that this is one, one view. And as you see this coming down the street, for example, you're gonna pan around it. You're gonna see the perhaps more attractive end of the new addition, and then a different view of the side of the house.
Isn't that the street view?
It is, but as I say, as you come down the street, you're not standing in one place. You're gonna, you're gonna pan around that entire three-dimensional house.
Side of that building.
Yeah, yeah.
Rear.
Here.
Right. There's other views actually in that, which I believe.
Yeah, I actually saw those, yeah.
Packet that has it, kind of the shot from this gate line.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I agree. It looks a little stark from that initial view, but I think it would be somewhat less stark. I mean, you could flip the plan over and get more glass on the front, being the living room facade, but. That's a question. What's the intended entrance point, I guess? Where are you gonna come into this? Are you gonna actually use, for both, both units? Which doors are likely to be the real used doors, do you think?
Primary, yeah, excuse me, the primary door for the accessory dwelling would be the one adjacent to the living room and kitchen on the left-hand gable.
Okay, yeah.
That's where the driveway leads to.
Mm-hmm.
And for the existing, they would use the, their current entrance, which is right in front of.
Right in the front, okay.
Secondary means through the connector.
Yep. And, yeah, I think so, at this point.
Could you flip it back to the other view? Yeah, I guess the comment about, you know, looking at the front of the accessory dwelling, I mean, part of this is that it's supposed to be clearly subordinate to the main part of the house. So, in a way, when I look at it, it does sort of look like an attached garage, which I think is actually good, because it does make it seem more subordinate. My comment is gonna be more towards maybe making both of the windows in the front small and maybe putting more landscaping there, and possibly consider rotating it to have less width on the front. But I mean, I think it's much better than before, when it was detached, it looked like two houses. And this, and, you know, the connection makes sense, because if you had someone, you know, an elderly parent or something living on one half, you can go in between the two. So, I think that part of it makes a lot of sense, and that's sort of the intent, I think, of the accessory is to have those possibilities for alternate types of housing and things like that. So, I like that part of it. You know, I guess it's a push and pull between what do you want? Do you want to fulfill this clearly subordinate part, or do you want it to look more architecturally pleasing? You know, if you make the front look just like the other house, it's gonna, you know, not be as clearly subordinate to the rest of the house. I tend to, when I look at it, I guess, I tend to wonder if we should maybe consider, see the connection that the kind of breezeway between the two. If you push the whole thing back so that it connects to the other bedroom, it basically pushed the accessory dwelling back, it goes back into the backyard more. It wouldn't get it that much further from the street and make it look that much more subordinate. I don't think it would affect your plan very much. I mean, I guess it would allow, maybe you flip the bedrooms or something.
Yeah.
But if that's what we're after, is making it look more subordinate, you could push it more into the backyard that way. But I think, you know, the dilemma here really is that, you know, under the bylaw, you do, you know, the greater forty percent or seven hundred and fifty square feet. When we're dealing with a small house like this, it's gonna be hard to make that disappear. Seven hundred and fifty square feet, there's only so much you can do.
I think that's, the design change was really to address the concern that the neighborhood and the board had about it looking like two small cottages on two small lots. You know, there are a lot of lots with small cottages built on it, the size of half of this lot. However, what this does is it makes, you know, does make the connection, I think, very similar to what the board had recommended the last time, and even kind of sketched out. And the fact that, as Laura had mentioned, that the existing home is so small, really, you know, creates a, creates a challenge, but.
Yeah. I mean, that, I guess, looking at it, I can't tell how close the house is that's right behind where the accessory dwelling is. Is it, how close is that to the back lot line, do you think? I guess what my question is, if we, if we decided to push the accessory dwelling back, is that gonna be worse off for the neighbor directly behind? Or is it better to keep it where it is and preserve that buffer?
We do have a plan that shows.
It's like you got.
Yeah, the house.
It's the.
Directly behind the.
Fuller, the fuller house.
Right, number thirty-two is actually kind of justified closer to Holly Road. This is old plans, I don't think you can touch it through this, but it shows the.
Oh, so it is quite a bit.
Right, this one is right up.
All right. Yes, there is some room there. I mean, I guess that's what I lean towards, although I'm not, you know, super strong on it either way. But if we're gonna do anything to make it more subordinate, I think I would make both of the front windows small, like the one on the left, because then when I look at it, it looks like, oh, someone added a two-car garage with a breezeway attached. You know, driving down the street, it's gonna look more like accessory to the main structure and potentially pushing it back that much further.
The trouble with doing that, Dan, is that you're gonna get a bedroom or a room that, you know, could be a bedroom with only a very small window. And I think actually by code, you need a certain amount of open sash so that you can escape out if there's a fire. And certainly aesthetically, if you're actually gonna live in that bedroom, you want a reasonable-sized window.
I see what you're saying, because we got a big bedroom on the back.
That's a small bedroom, it's less than ten by twelve.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
No, I don't, I don't think that's a real drawback. I don't mind the asymmetry.
Yeah.
I mean, you might, you might make it a little less jumpy by putting a window in the bathroom basically the same size as the one you've got in the kitchen. So, there's two similar windows there.
You know, where you put the, you put a window on the bedroom number two on the side of the house. Small one.
A slighter slide the house back so the breezeway is engaging that, the bedroom at that point.
I mean, right here.
Right, but you're gonna slide it back so the breezeway engages.
No, I'm saying without doing that now.
Oh, okay, okay.
If we abandon that idea, because I can see how that's not gonna work now with, unless we rotate it or did a significant change, so.
Well, I would still honestly.
But I think it's, you know, it's an aesthetic thing. I mean, if you want it to look subordinate, you do less on the front. You know, if you want it to look nice, maybe you do more what Eric's talking about and make it match and make it look like one big house. So, and I'm, I guess I'm not strong either way on that.
I like the idea of moving it back, because it certainly does, you know, reduces the massiveness, you know, because of the difference in perspective from the street.
Or if you rotated it, I guess, but that creates all kinds of new design issues. So, I don't know if we need to get into that level of detail.
Looks relatively square though, doesn't it?
It's, yeah, it's about seven-foot difference, like twenty-three by thirty-one. So, you gain seven, you know, you lose seven feet of width on the front.
I don't think you're gonna be able to mask just the innate size of it either way.
Yeah, it's not a huge difference.
And you wouldn't want the gable end certainly facing the street. You don't want to have two gable ends facing in the same direction.
But at least from that view, I mean, it does look like a garage addition or something from the street. And I, I think that, to me, fulfills the subordinate part as much as you probably can, unless you try to put the accessory truly like directly behind the house or hit it, which on the site plan, I don't think makes a lot of sense. It kind of ruins the backyard and. So, that's all I had.
Richard?
Yeah, I think I echo some of the other comments. My first reaction was, well, gee, maybe, like Dan said, if you rotated it ninety. Or I was even thinking maybe if you just took it and squeezed a little bit from the left side so that it becomes not so linear. Because then that was my first thought, was that, you know, comparing the existing house to this addition, it just, the addition looked almost, I mean, from that, I know from that view, it looks a little bit larger. I agree with what Bob's saying, is though you probably wouldn't see it from that particular direction. So, but in general, I wanted to say that, you know, light years better from the last proposal. It certainly does look like one structure. My only comments would be maybe a few tweaks, if you could, like I said, maybe take the, and I don't know if it would even work, but to thin down that linear front elevation portion so it wasn't quite so large. I don't know if you, like I said, if you brought the left side in and then actually increased the back a little bit, whether that would work in the floor plan or not. The other option I just, that you guys mentioned, maybe having the, I thought the window, the small window in the bathroom was also a little bit strange, and maybe like having the same as the kitchen is a good idea for consistency. And those were my main com, oh, my other comment was just, I thought it was a little bit weird that the breezeway had entered into the bedroom, but. I know that, again, you're under tight constraints. So, I mean, those were my main comments, was just that maybe with a little bit of tweaking, it could actually look a little bit more subordinate. And that was, as Laura said, I think it's really subjective on what does subordinate mean.
One of the things I noticed is the dimension on, front to back on the addition is practically identical to the existing house. So, if you have the same roof slope, which I assume you're going to, you'll end up with the same ridge height, which is, I'm sure what you were after doing. So, that's, you know, that's basically a good idea.
What's that?
Yeah, no further comments.
Questions from the public?
Oh, yeah.
Introduce yourself, introduce yourself and then.
Susan Elias, that number forty guy. Since they won't see the help from the last plan, it looks even less subordinate to me. I believe the dimensions of the width of the accessory dwelling is actually wider than the current dwelling. So, to me, it looks even bigger, less subordinate, that's quite a way to say it. That's one of my comments. The other thing is, one of the criteria were that the building was not, the building remained, the appearance of the building remained unchanged as much as feasibly possible. To me, that's quite different. I mean, that really changes the look of it drastically in my mind. Again, it looks less subordinate to me than the first plan. And then there were a few small things that I felt were, I mean, maybe I'm nitpicking, but with the regs. One of the things says a new exterior, any new exterior stairs are not on, should be on the side or the rear of the house. And they're not. It seems to me now that by putting that breezeway thing in. It seems to me now that by putting that breezeway thing in there, that now you have the stairs in the front rather than the side or the rear.
Those stairs are existing already.
Pardon?
The stairs are already.
No, the.
There's a set of stairs here into the.
Under the breezeway.
Right, that, that are existing. And then the breezeway encapsulates that and also the entrance into the accessory dwelling.
The breezway exists.
The breezeway stairs.
No, no.
There's a, there's a.
There's a lumber one in the house.
There's a, there's a little bump off with a set of stairs, right. So it's really just same.
And that'll be converted to a breezway?
Just moving.
Move around the corner of the door.
Yes.
So those are existing stairs?
Well, the.
There are stairs.
Replacing existing.
Very close to that location right now.
My other question was, is it still under the seven hundred fifty square feet? According to what I measured, when you add the, I think the original plan was sixty-six, I think Mr. Townsend said fifty-two or something square feet for that breezeway area. It seems to me that the dimensions of the house and that breezeway exceed seven fifty. Maybe I'm, you know, just not doing the math right.
The fifty-two square feet was in reference to the rear deck. The breezeway area is outside of the, of the footprint of the accessory dwelling and is sixty-six square feet.
But it would be a new structure, so I mean, isn't it part of the accessory dwelling? It leads to the bedroom. I mean, to me, it's more attached sort of to the accessory dwelling than it is to the other one, especially if it leads right into a bedroom. So I just, you know, like I say, when I did the math, I came up with over seven fifty when you count that area and the house itself, the new accessory dwelling.
Well, I mean, if that's an issue, she, she could build that as of right and the, any approval could be.
Build that and build it.
Right.
The accessory dwelling.
I'm sorry, what was that called?
The point was that he was making was that he could, as a matter of right, he could build the connector if he would, right? And he could build that and then come in and then build the accessory dwelling, so that would.
So basically, it's not really part of the accessory square foot that we have to count? It's more of a design issue.
I mean, you're gonna need two building permits anyway, conceivably, right?
Yeah.
One for the renovation and one for the new construction.
Right, absolutely.
So this could, the breezeway could be part of the renovation.
So it's really not a square, it doesn't violate the square footage the way it is now?
I, I thought that was part of, you know, the new.
But it's still a design issue. You could still say, you know, why do we need the breezeway? You know, it's, it's a design issue if we think that makes it not subordinate enough or we could look at it from that angle.
Yeah, and I guess the whole subordinate thing still bothers me because by turning the house, rotating it, the width of the new dwelling is wider than the house. So as you drive by and in appearances, it looks bigger to me. And when I look at those schematics and those photos, it looks bigger and in fact, it measures bigger. So those were my comments. Thank you.
Okay.
I think that was what we were talking about, if there was a way to, like, it's gonna be hard, but if you could skinny up the kitchen and living room and go back a little further, but I think based on these dimensions, there's not a lot of room to do that.
So that's gonna create other problems, I think.
It's pretty small already, fourteen feet, so I mean.
Good. Other questions in the public, comments?
Oh, yeah. Nancy Larkham, I'm at thirty-eight Garden Road. First, I wanna thank the staff for the help. We looked at files and we also took the list of all approved accessory dwellings since bylaw was passed, cruised around Situate and looked at them. We actually looked within our own neighborhood as well. And we really didn't see anything comparable to this. And despite the breezeway, which is really a covered breezeway, it still looks like two buildings. Notwithstanding the one thousand square feet for the primary building and the maximum of seven fifty, it still looks like two buildings on two, on a very tiny lot. And with the additional of the driveway on either side, it also contributes to it looking like two separate buildings. It looks like any condo, a duplex you've ever seen. And you might say that it looks like a garage, and that was my first impression as well. But if you go to the other side of the house, it has a very elaborate entranceway. So it, it does not look like an addition. And at the last hearing, for the last application, there was an awful lot of discussion around making this attached, making it look like one building. And as we looked around at different things, especially the two properties on Fay Street, twenty-five and twenty-four, they look like larger homes with the accessory dwelling, which is attached to the wall, not just a thin little breezeway, which doesn't seem to meet at least the suggestions that were made by the planning board at the last meeting and certainly what the abutters could, you know, enthusiastically support. So that was, you know, a major concern that we had. We don't really think that the suggestions were incorporated into this plan. I mean, there was a lot of talk about a wall and having a wall and, unless that's what you all meant, but that, we expected to see something quite different and more in keeping with what we saw in other prior approved accessory dwellings. I would also add that, you know, if this kind of a model is approved, it would, appears to be one of the first, and this has implications for all of our double lots on our street, of which I think we have eight, so that eight people could do exactly the same thing. Now we've got double driveways on these small lots entering the traffic flow. Those are the concerns that we have. I think that's all I have to say at the moment.
Okay. Next.
Okay. I just wanna reiterate.
We need to know who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry, Barbara McFadden, I live right next door.
Okay.
Thirty-five Garden Road. Mr. Monger last time said the bylaw is not meant to be a way to have a second house on a lot. And that's what it is. It's two houses with a breezeway. It's clearly two single-family houses on, on a lot that's ten thousand square foot and is supposed to have one single-family house. What we said as a neighborhood is if she wanted to move her parents in or all the other reasons that people asked for a special permit, that would require something really different than that. And if she wanted to put an addition on her house, an addition which would be much smaller square foot than seven fifty plus the sixty-six for the breezeway to accommodate that, we would be fine with that. That's what we were saying. We weren't saying that we approved putting two single-family dwellings on a ten thousand square foot lot because in our neighborhood, it would, it would be disastrous. And nowhere, we, we drove all over Situate. I looked back at the records for all R3s since nineteen ninety-two, when this by law was passed, when the new zoning thing happened. And nowhere did I see anything on a lot that small with an accessory dwelling that big that wasn't like already a footprint like a carriage house or a garage that was completed or something. This is entirely different than anything that we looked at. And we tried to find, we, we were really interested, when you all said additions with this common wall, we thought, oh, let's go see what that looks like around here. And it doesn't look like that. And, and I'm very upset about it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Gene Briat from thirty-eight Garden Road, if I may. These are the next street over. I don't know if I can share these with you. Fay Street is one street over and there are two houses exactly opposite each other that you approved in two thousand and five and two thousand and four. And I think this is what we were talking about, is this is the main house and this is the attached, and it really, it has a shared wall. There's no breezeway. It really does look like an accessory, you know.
An integral part of the house.
An integral part. And this is sort of what we were expecting to see, and it fits in our neighborhood. These are right next door, the next street over, and they're opposite to each other.
So this is an accessory.
Yes, this is.
Yeah, that's an accessory, this is an accessory.
This is the main.
Be like taking.
The angle.
Pretty good size.
Yeah, this one is good, this is a triple lot, actually. This is good size.
But this is that plan eliminating the breezeway, basically.
Yeah, one of those is a sixteen thousand square foot lot.
I think some of the reason we think this looks so big to us is I think that the breezeway pushes it out. And I feel like if it were joined with a common wall, as we talked before, it would appear much smaller.
Look like a single.
Because it would have an integrated roof line that would make it.
And one of those properties is fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine square feet originally, when they had put the addition on, not ten thousand. Yeah, and if I could repeat something that was just said, when we last met and there was a lot of talk about making it look more attached and talking about a common wall and soundproof walls, there were lots of good suggestions. So we expected to see something more like those photos and something closer to what was discussed at the last meeting. This doesn't look like anything that was discussed. And at the last meeting, we said we could support, as a neighbor, we could support a plan, you know, that had a shared wall that truly looked like just a bigger house. And this doesn't look like that to me.
Anybody else?
I just wanna add why there aren't as many of us here tonight, but this is the second night in a row that our lights went out on our street.
Oh, no.
So.
I'd rather be here and be more.
So in, in no way should that infer that there isn't the same feelings for the group that was here the last time. And as you can see on the letter, we even had more signatures. So we do feel strongly about this. In addition to that, I think the issue of owner occupancy still remains very much a concern for us. As I looked at the files in the planning board, I didn't see anything where there wasn't a sitting owner at the time that the permit was granted, except when it was a brand-new purchase, and I think there were two of those, brand-new purchases or a brand-new renovation. So I am concerned that the applicant plans to live in the house. We just don't see that. And we're concerned about what will happen if indeed that doesn't take place. And it was mentioned, I, I went back and looked at the minutes, it was mentioned at the last meeting that should the applicant not reside in one of the units, that the special permit is in, in.
Violent.
In violent?
Yeah, we actually put it as a condition on the permit. They can't have the accessory dwelling unless part of its owner occupied. So you wouldn't need to worry about if someone's living there or not. If no one's living there, the owner, then they violate the permit that we grant them.
And then what happens?
Well, then it would be a zoning enforcement action and they could.
Oh, there is. I couldn't, you know, we, we tried to do as much research as we could, and we, we couldn't really see what would actually be the repercussions of that. There was some discussion around taking legal action, that we would have to take legal action.
No, it, yeah, it'd be like anything, it'd be a violation of the permit that we issue.
Oh, okay, okay.
I mean, we put right in all of our accessory dwellings. It has to be, one part has to be owner occupied for it to be valid. And if it wasn't and it was discovered, then it would go to, I guess, to Neil first, right, is the zoning enforcement action.
And then would it ultimately violate the special permit?
And so you could actually remove the certificate of occupancy from accessory and, yeah.
Thank you, 'cause that was a question, that, thank you for that clarification. I also saw in one of the approvals, I think it's Fifth Ave, they're asked to every year common attest that they still live there. So I did see that kind of information added once things were approved.
I don't know if we've done that on our recent ones or not. Have we?
Well, three to five was recent.
Wasn't we put that right in that?
Yep.
That was right in the decision, they have to annually, three, fifth.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, that, well, we could certainly continue to do that.
I also wanna say, because there was some mention about us not supporting the bylaw. In fact, we do support the bylaw. We have actually an accessory dwelling with a mother and daughter in the, in the neighborhood. And when I went back and looked at the files and looked at the letters and saw as people wrote their purpose, clearly people were living there, wanna stay, have to build in-law apartments, need a little extra income, they're long-term residents in the home. And so we do support it, we just don't support this project the way it's being presented. One, it's rental property where I don't think the applicants ever lived in the house. And then secondly, that it looks like two separate buildings. So that's, so that's been our concern.
Can I, can I correct that? I actually have lived in the home. I don't, no, Barbara, you had, actually you had lived in it, you still have lived in it.
About years ago or something.
But, right, 'cause I went back to get my, well, should my life be put out there. I actually moved back in with my parents so I could finish up my degree. I finished up my degree at the time I was working for a biotech when I purchased the home. And obviously, a biotech salary is a little different from the state salary that I currently make, which is one of the reasons why, in order for us to do this and move back into the home, is to, I mean, it is what it is. And I think as a single mom, I, as a divorced mom, I am trying to raise my children in the neighborhood that I grew up in. I think that I'm working my tail off to make that happen and, you know, just a little bit discouraged that that's not.
But it's, it is your intent to live in the house?
Yes.
Okay.
And actually, I had a conversation with Mr. Doug on a Tuesday, and he reiterated and explained and said, this is what happens in this, and he said, did you sign an affidavit saying, and I said, yes. And is that your intent? I said, yes, I live in Situate, my parents live in Situate, like, my parents are elderly, they, yes.
And I don't think we have to get into that anyway, 'cause it's a condition of any permit we would grant anyway, so.
It's already been submitted, right?
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a moot one.
Does, excuse me, does the application, is it submitted like under one of those five purposes, so to speak? Like, is there a stated purpose of one of these five that does that plan?
I, I think that, I think the purpose, it's not, but I mean, the purposes are really pretty broad. It's meant to capture a lot of things. I mean, like, one of them is so general, I think it's pretty easy to fulfill the, the purposes. I mean, one is just to provide a variety of housing. So I mean, it's.
To the residents, affordable housing.
No, this isn't an affordable accessory, this is a regular, so like.
Workers, workers, I think.
So, so like, you know, it could be.
Affordability is sort of addressed.
Any one of these purposes. And one just says to provide a variety of types of housing to meet the needs of residents and workers. So it's, it's drafted very broadly, it's very easy to fulfill the purpose. We don't have to say you have to do it because, you know, you're maintaining it for a parent or something, you know, it doesn't have to fit into one of those boxes, so.
And that's, may I, may I address that?
But, but if the intent were to, like, you know, if the intent were shown to be, you know, they're gonna rent out two separate ones and not live there, then yeah. But that.
That's been our concern.
If it's something like that, yeah. But, but I think, you know, we have an affidavit, she said she's gonna live there, it would be a condition of the permit, actually would be illegal if she or the owner of the property didn't live there, then they could shut down the accessory part of it, so.
Does that language kinda stay with the house in perpetuity, so to speak?
Yeah, it's a permit, it's actually a permit for the construction that goes with it, so, yeah.
Goes on the deed, it's registered.
Now, I just, I'm just concerned that eight people on our street can say they have a need to be able to stay in their house and so they wanna build a whole nother house just like it next door, but they'll put a little breezeway so they can rent it out. And it would, it, it's, I think the intention of this law was not for that. I think that if it was a tiny addition or something on, in our crowded neighborhood, that would be one thing, but I, I really am struggling with how somebody can just build another house when the bylaw strictly says you cannot do that. Because that's what it is. She's building a second house with a breezeway. She's gonna be able to rent it out. And I just, I, I think it's a mistake because it's, it's setting a terrible precedent in our block alone. And we're in a very dense part of the community anyway.
Yeah, your point, your point's fair. Let me chip on. I guess when we saw before, and we kinda sent it back to the drawing board, what I envisioned was to see something, at least in my mind, closer to what was on Fay Road or Fay than what's here. It really is, if I look at the breezeway, the connector, is what I call it, I mean, I, I really have to almost come in, close the door to open up the second door to get, literally if I'm gonna go into the bedroom, or even worse, if I'm gonna come in and go going to go into the bedroom, or even worse, if I'm going to come in and go the other direction. So, effectively, I've created this breezeway, which really is, is almost a non-utilitarian function, basically, other than connecting these two structures together. And that's, that's the problem that I have. I still have two houses that are connected. If, if we're on Fay, it ends up they've got a common wall. That's kind of what I expected. So, I see where I've gotten, because you've got the opportunity to, where they're basically literally the same width, and sit there and have a common roof structure, to bring them in so that it would match with similar ones on Fay. And that's at least what I was expecting to see when it came back in. I wasn't expecting to see, basically, a, you know, a two-bedroom unit that has a, that has a breezeway that basically connects it to the existing house. And I fiddled around, not, not to the extent of the expertise that Bob has, or Dan, but to shift it back to see, maybe that made it, you know, more palatable. But I really ended up, I still have this breezeway. What I need to do is squeeze them, in my mind, I got to squeeze them together to get rid of the breezeway. So, that's, that's kind of where I come down on it.
Well, one thing I was thinking about is if you took the accessory dwelling, shift it back so that it aligns with the current dwelling. And then, basically, the roof line of the accessory dwelling comes over completely and is, basically, does a hip into the existing dwelling. So, what happens is, basically, because it shifted back, the roof line actually becomes like a covered porch for that entry into the breezeway. So, therefore, the entire accessory dwelling roof structure would go sort of seamlessly as a hip into the existing. Would that look more like an existing house?
We still think it's too soon?
It would, but it would space it out even more, is so that I think it would look like a large, it would look even larger than it does now.
It's going to look ridiculous.
I don't think you need the bree, I don't think you basically need the breezeway. I think you're right, Bill.
If I, could I just interject one? I think there's a couple of comments. And I think the, you know, the size of the lot was not, is not really, in my mind, the question. I don't think anyone was, was saying that the lot was too small to do an accessory dwelling. I think what we're seeing is that, you know, I don't, I don't have the pictures that you have in front of you right now, but those are, you know, you... Larger homes that have accessory dwellings attached to them, probably around 750 square foot size. And really, what we have is...
Seven fifty and a larger...
On a larger building attached to a lot. I mean, I think really what we have is, is that Maria has, if I can start, please. If, you know, what we have here is that because the existing building is just over a thousand square feet, the, the owner is being, you know, punished in this, in this sense, because the accessory dwelling, even though it meets the criteria of the bylaw, appears to be larger or as large or too large for the lot or for the building. And I think that's really what we have to, you know, be careful with, because I wouldn't want to, you know, see Maria be unfairly punished because the existing home is small, which is what I, I'm getting the sense of, not just...
But if you put it together with a common wall, that would eliminate breezeway altogether. Then, then you've got a common building.
And if you wanted sort of like a mudroom breezeway thing, you could put it behind the house, you know? If you still wanted something like that, you could...
Well, I, I just, I think what I want is, is, you know, and I obviously need to speak with Maria about it, but I, you know, some assurance that if we're keeping with the criteria of the bylaw, and I think we have from the very beginning. I know that there's concern about it, and I know that there's, the size of the existing home makes things very difficult. But as long as we're keeping with the criteria and the standards, and dimensionally, the requirements of the bylaw, that, you know, Maria can get something approved here, that, that helps her family out, because that's what you, that's what we're trying to do. We're not trying to do anything that's, that's outside of what's allowed. And...
The question really, it's just the subordinate piece of it that is one of the criteria, so...
Right.
You can meet it dimensionally, but still not meet the other criteria. So, that's where the breezeway comes in.
And it's also where the size of the existing structure comes in, right?
No, no, I mean, the size isn't an issue, so.
Yeah. I mean, it's really that...
It's the subordination component.
I mean, if that breeze were existing now, we could still say we don't want you to connect there. We want the accessory behind it, because you'd end up with that result, which if we're saying we don't like that. So, it's not, there's nothing to do with the existing size. You still can have your 750 square feet. It just is a matter of placement and how it looks from the street. You know, if she had a, you know, I don't know, I guess she had another 500 square feet on the house, it still would be the similar issue.
Is there any technical reason why you can't eliminate the breezeway and shove the entire accessory dwelling toward the main dwelling? I see you'd have to remove one window in the living room.
You'd have to push it back in order to leave windows in the living room.
Yeah. Because right now, it looks like it's aligned with the second window, so it'd have to be pushed back a little bit. And then, you'd, the window in the living room, and then the door, and there's a window in the kitchen.
Did you see these pictures? Yeah, just look, look at them, yep.
I mean, so I guess, was there a, is there a...
The purpose of the...
I cheated back to clear both windows.
Yeah.
I cheated back. We're talking officials back on the street.
Right. Well, the two, you know, the reason for the, for the breezeway, in addition to the connection, is, is it's a utilitarian space. I mean, it provides access to the, to the basement through the bulk, you know, through the bulkhead area, which is the door in the top left. The existing secondary means of egress from the existing home remains intact and connects into it. And then, it allows a pass-through to the rear yard. And, you know, so it really accomplished all of the egress requirements that were, you know, that were needed for both buildings.
We've got a small, we've got a small room essentially with four doorways going in and out.
Yep. That's right.
The bulkhead is in that sort of space in the upper left? Is that what you said?
Yeah, that would be as, it wouldn't really be a bulkhead in the classic sense, but a door or two.
So, it'd be like a ship's stair going down.
Stairs down to the, correct.
But there is a stairway going down to the basement in the, right?
In the house, yes.
Yeah. In the accessory dwelling?
Yes.
Okay.
Not one that you would want to drag a weed whacker or lawn mower up or anything.
I don't know. To me, I like the direction of the conversation, that if you eliminate the breezeway and get something more like Fay, it takes care of the subordinate issue. For me, it seems like a design issue that could be clearly dealt with, with a little bit of work.
Yeah, I don't think it's, Bob's schedule is looking over his shoulder, that it needs to be shifted that far back. If it was shifted back so that the front of it is where the, the front of the addition, or the front of the accessory dwelling, would be moved back so that the front of it is in line with where the breezeway is now.
I don't even think you'd have to move it that far back.
I mean, the other nice thing, too, I suppose, if you did push it together, you could do nicer things on the front elevation, too, because it would look more like one house.
Yeah, you could put... The same-sized windows.
Same-sized windows.
I have to ask Bill. I don't know if they get into residence.
I think it'd be an improved street view, then.
You know, if it...
I could see a lot of things that could happen. You could still have a small breezeway, but what you'd want to make sure is that this eve line carried over and the roof. So, the breezeway would be oriented vertically instead of horizontally, if you want to say that.
Yep.
So, you could still have an entryway there of one kind or another.
But if that, if, the main thing I think is, like, if you took the roof, though, of the accessory dwelling, and just made sure that it went all the way over and connected into the main dwelling, then that would look more like a part of the house.
Yeah. Yeah, the breezeway, what really makes it look like a duplex, for sure.
If you shifted, if you shifted the accessory dwelling back, it rotated the breezeway so that it is, what, 90 degrees from where it is now, that in effect would allow you to carry that same roof line all the way through.
Yeah, carry the same roof line all the way across.
So, then, then it's...
And keep it narrow, you know, keep it like four feet, so you don't add too much...
No, basically, just the door and door.
Take this, move it this way, and bring the same, same layout up to it. So, the door, so you're saying that the secondary egress out of the existing kitchen would remain?
Yeah, it would be about where the steps are, where that little mudroom is now, basically. You know, the breezeway would be an extension of the existing mudroom. And it would, it would be...
So, this house would pull up to here?
On the plan page, it would, it would be oriented vertically as opposed to horizontally, so it didn't have to space the new addition out.
But then this would be pulled back with this?
The roof line would carry all the way over.
You know, the other thing that would, that would look better on this, would be a hip on the addition, like, like that.
That would be, yeah?
Because you don't have a big, high gable now that you're looking at this end. You know, you've got the same, even though this, and maybe it would be, make it look more subordinate, too.
Yeah, it would take, get rid of the elevation.
It would, yeah, it would, like, fade the roof down on the end. If you, if you ran the eaves of the new addition all the way around at the same elevation, instead of having a gable end on this left-hand side that I'm looking at, you'd, you'd make that end of the roof, you'd clip it off and make it a hip roof on that end. That would, that would really decrease the bulk substantially.
It would almost look like an extended dormer in a way, a very large extended dormer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just hit that.
I'd be amazed how less bulky it's going to look if you do that.
You'd have, you'd have a roof this way. You could, maybe put the skylight in that. If, I mean, I, I think we have a very positive design solution that we can work with. Is it something I could, we could draft up quickly and, and send, send to you with a continuation?
Continue this, then you can work on it. But as I think, that would work out, I think that would work out well. I mean, it ends up, I think there's support for what you're trying to do. What we're trying to do is to figure out how it fits. And you've got the unfortunate thing, if we've got a very small lot in size, that you're basically trying to put two relatively good-sized components on. The most accessory dwellings we've got are, are either a larger, larger lot, or, as is pointed out, it was either a carriage or garage or, or that, and it was an addition. So, you're somewhat a pioneer, I think, in terms of what you're looking to do. Not that that makes you feel any better. But I think, I think, I think there's an opportunity to do it. And I think there's, you know, you know, it's either sliding it back or changing it to a hip roof, or come back up and, and making changes to the breezeway. I think, you know, I think there's a lot of ways that you can come back and do it.
So, I'd like to ask the neighborhood, like, if we did those, or if they, in good faith, if they did some of those changes that we're discussing here with, like, rotating the breezeway and bringing the, the roof line over, would that be acceptable to you as far as a design aesthetic?
It would be to me personally, if I understand what you're saying. So, like, the breezeway just sort of wouldn't be there from the front when you looked at it.
There might be, yeah, exactly. Well, we're actually looking at now, so maybe a smaller one, a very small, like, about half the size it is now.
But the roof is going to carry roof.
But the roof would carry all the way.
There's not going to be any notch between the new roof and the, and the existing.
Yeah, the roof would look like on this one, it would continue all the way across into the other one.
This is what we're comfortable with. That looks like...
I think we can do that.
In fact, this one has a hip roof on the end, so it would be much more of this look with the hip on the end and a continuous roof line across.
Can you, which, what address is that?
I don't know. Which one is this? Is this, oh, this is Fay Street.
Fay Road.
That's Fay Ro, Fay Street of Road, next Fay Road.
Oh, they're both, they're both labeled Fay, so.
One's 24, they're opposite. One's 24, one's 25. They're opposite corners of the street.
Yeah.
And where's, where's Fay relative to Garden?
Where the alphabet's.
Okay. So, I think the, the closer you can get to this look, I think the happier everybody's going to be.
The one on the other side's Edgar Street.
I don't know. Is this something you need back, or do you?
No. And, and see how the windows are so uniform and stuff.
I just have two questions. What is, what is the staircase in the, in the new accessory
dwelling? Where does that staircase go?
Down in the basement.
So, it's a full basement?
Yeah, it's a full-height basement.
Full-height basement, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
And I also want to say that I think the board wants to make everyone happy in a good compromise. I mean, we want to support Maria. We definitely understand that. But we also want to make the neighborhood happy as well. So, I think we can come to a good compromise here for everyone.
I agree.
In fact, I could say, I mean, it would probably sound like we're being negative, but we definitely can support it, just a plan that, you know, looks more like the ones on Fay Road. And that's kind of what we expected to see. I echo the chairman's comments that it's still kind of as it is, looks like two separate things with just a little attachment. You know, we thought it would look more like the Fay Road, to have the total shared wall or something, which we, you know, said at the last meeting, well, I can't speak for everybody, but I would support it, you know?
Okay.
And the primary building will be renovated, because it certainly doesn't look anything like the new one right now. So...
Well, that's the intention.
That's on record, too.
That's the intention. But that's, that's a different permit, or it's done separate from this?
Yeah.
You're going to get a rehab permit for one half, and then you're going to get a construction permit for the other half.
Yeah, there's no requirement that they do anything with the primary, so.
Could I ask a gentleman from San Council, did you mention you sent us another letter?
No, after the, the initial meeting.
Oh, okay.
I believe I got everyone on the list.
Yes, because we hadn't seen this, I, we hadn't gotten it. So, we were just concerned if you had said you sent us something else to come review this beforehand. We didn't get it, so we just wanted to...
No, just the, the first...
Oh, are you? Okay, I misunderstood.
So, let me ask this question. When, how long do you think it would take you to get it?
I probably have it for you on Monday.
Okay.
Seriously, I mean, I...
Monday's a holiday, so you can take it till Tuesday morning.
Not for me.
And they're, they're going to move the two buildings together, just so I'm clear when we're...
That's what the intent is, is to come back up and move them closer together, look for a common roof line to basically, because right now, you've got, you've got a...
Keep some...
This, this turns 90 degrees.
Very similar to what you did with the folded page.
Do we have time on our next agenda?
We're already kind of focal by 15.
Another meeting, yeah. No, no, no. Shouldn't. I think they're doing two a month.
Um, yeah, we can...
What's at 9:15?
Form a...
Right, so we get, we get the sidewalks, sidewalks first. What do we have after the sidewalks?
After the sidewalks, we have the JW piece of takeout.
Okay, so that's the site plan.
Then, we, I threw in there some kind of a discussion about what you all want to see the department and yourselves do for the next year, because we really need to start thinking about that for the whole budget process and, you know, just our own internal planning process. So, we can do that.
If we do that after, we could put them in at...
And we can put them in, in that slot.
So, we can put them at, at 8?
That would be, that would be 8:30, assuming a half hour for the piece of takeout.
8:30, it would be the, what day?
Oh, the, the 20th, right?
The 20th. Does that work?
And the WPA building.
It's a Tuesday. We have an odd schedule during the holidays, so, yeah.
And it's also at the WPA building, which is...
Is everybody going to be attending the meeting?
Yes.
Inside will might be.
And will, excuse me, will we see the letter with the new date?
No, you're getting it now.
October 20th, 8:30.
November 20th.
November 20th.
November 20th, 8:30?
8:30.
The WPA.
WPA building? They'll be available as soon as, as soon as you, you...
I can bring hard copies as well and leave them at the, at the planning board office.
Just be in the office.
Yes. Okay, you know, where the... Okay, it worked at WBA building.
Where is that?
North Sichuan?
Where the, is that new, what, kind of visitor center building, right?
Stone building in North Sichuan?
Where the T parking lot is, where the...
Yes.
If I could, pushing, but ask one more question. If this, if they kind of push together and it's the plan that everybody's discussing now, do you still feel that the accessory dwelling appears subordinate to the original?
Probably as much as possible. I mean, I mean, there's some things you could do, but...
I think you're getting there, really.
You're getting pretty close. I mean, other than, like, hiding it behind the house or something, which isn't going to work with how close the lot lines are.
No, I'm just hearing kind of your opinion, because I feel differently, so I just wanted to know, you know?
I mean, it, clearly, if the main house were bigger, it would seem a lot more subordinate. It's just hard to do with the square footage.
Right.
I mean, I, I think the goal of subordination is, is, you know, a, a good one. But in fact, it's as important that the entire composition look like one. And I think this will achieve that. So, it's going to look like a single, larger home.
Right. I agree. And I think if, I mean, if money were no object, you could put a large addition on the existing or tear down the existing and replace it, and then do a, you know what I mean?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you could build a bigger house.
And that's, that would be by right.
You could build a house the size on.
It would be the same effect aesthetically as you, you know, look at it from the outside.
Right. But from a massing standpoint, it would make it worse. So, I think, you know...
No, I mean, this, I think this is, is, what we've talked about is, to me, you know, about as good as this can get. And I think it's going to be pretty good.
It'll all look like one house. I, I think that's primary objective here is...
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think so. Okay. So, what we're going to do is, at the applicant's request, and you'll have to fill out a little note, tell us that. But at the applicant's request, we will continue this hearing until... Yeah, we will. We're going to lay out the ground rules of what we want for motion. Or let's do this. I need a motion to continue at the applicant's request to our next meeting at 8:30.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call us a favor.
Hi.
It's at the WPA building.
Yeah. And I want to comment that just thank you for both the public and thank you for the applicant, for the willingness to work together. Appreciate it.
And you guys have my number, too, if you don't, if you can't get it for the money more often.
Can we keep these?
I live there. I see it all the time.
That may be funnest view.
I think next time, you need to send us a video.
Can we take a five-minute break?
John, not that it matters a hill of beans, but what did you use for the, the software to do that?
They had accessory dwellings that they'd built and then torn down.
Next item on the agenda is endorse an additional Mylar registration for Two Bailey's Island.
Right, it's, it's. Thank you, I'm Richard Henderson from Henderson and Henderson and Co., and Representative Eleanor P. Nichols, who owns Bailey's Island, the formate was previously approved, but it's land courted property, so the land court department had to review it, it is identical in every respect except there's, in terms of boundaries, frontages, none of that, what the land court asked to have three things, they asked to have more markers, boundary markers between the dividing line, they found in the certificate of title, a chapter 91 license, so they wanted the dock depicted on the ground, and they found on the certificate of title, New England Telephone and Electric Company easement from the 20s and they were at the 50s, I guess, and they wanted the overhead wires depicted, so the only thing that, there's no difference in the boundaries, the plan they approved, it's only more detailed in that has wires, a dock, and more monuments in the ground between the lot lines, otherwise it's already been signed, so, almost done with this, so.
Okay, Laura?
I think it's basically the same, the same plan, but I think some of the.
The detail, yeah, no, the lot lines are not, no, it's the, the only thing that I know are, these are the documents they requested from me, this is the doc, the chapter 91 license, and electrical easement, and the monuments, they, they're just in the ground.
So did they add the easement to the, I mean, to the drawing?
I think there was a little bit of change in some of the.
No, we don't have it.
And I think they might have changed.
Well, they, I think they might have wanted the distribution of the property.
Bailey's Island.
This is a letter of the land court for the easement, so you can add it.
So that, that represents what needs to be signed?
Yes.
Presumably the same as what it was before.
Yeah, the only thing I knew about are the overhead wires are shown, the dock is there, that's it, and then they put, they put, they wanted more kings between the lot lines.
And why don't we just have a motion to endorse the form, right?
Maybe Laura already has it.
One of them is.
Yeah.
This one's about a thousand square feet.
The Mylar.
Okay.
So what's the difference, Laura? Well, let's hear, what's the difference, though, you're saying there's another difference?
Yeah, it's about a thousand square feet.
Between the lots?
The parcel is about, the parcel is about a thousand square feet different, this is about 600 square foot different, and this is about the same, but substantially the acreage is the same on this one, this went from 3.1 acres down to 3.0 acres, and the part, this was 6,000, so I think it's because they put the central line.
They may have changed, right.
That, I think because of the harder geometry, it changed, but.
This parcel's not buildable anyway, so, and these have plenty of square footage and acreage.
Right.
These are.
Okay, so I don't see that that's really neat.
No.
Substantive impact.
Way down at the end of Indian Trail, going out into the marsh towards.
Oh, yeah.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah. And before the motion.
Oh, you got it right there?
Yeah, not that it matters a hill of beans, but, I said that twice tonight, I saw on a map that this easement was called Nebraska Lane, I was just curious if that was the case. Remember, I sent you that?
Once upon a time.
I know, all right.
Got a motion coming up?
Oh, I see.
All right. I move to endorse as approved under the subdivision control law, not required, a plan of land in the town of Situate, Massachusetts, located at Two Bailey's Island, prepared by Cavanaro Consulting for applicant Eleanor P. Nichols, dated July 31, 2012, as the planning board endorsed a similar plan on July 26, 2012, and date 9/22/11, and this plan is conceptually the same, except for the required information for recording in the land court has been added, this information includes additional drill holes and bounds set resulting in the square footage of Lot 3, Lot 4, and Parcel 5 having minor changes.
Second?
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
My special Mylar signing pen?
No, how much more are you?
I signed laws.
Okay.
That's fine, I'll bring a check tomorrow, just tell them. Tomorrow, are you open, I mean?
Yeah, until 11:35.
Okay, it's kind of, okay.
I'll sign it, they have the meeting, Richard, you can pick it up tomorrow.
All right, fine, Bill, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Richard, just quickly, the driveway, was that ever called Nebraska Lane?
You know, I honestly don't know, it might have been, it's, we went back to 1927 at the land court, it's been there for a long, long time, but I don't know if it ever was named, why?
Well, I saw on a map, and I sent the map to Laura, I zoomed in and sent you a picture, because on the map, off of Bailey's, what's the cause, or Wood Island Road.
Wood Island Road, right.
Was this little tiny lane called Nebraska Lane, but it's really the driveway.
Yeah, I don't know, it's been there, it's been on the ground, well, it hasn't been on the ground for long, I went back to 1927 and I, it started popping up in the 50s on the plans, but it never had a name on any of the land court plans, so.
It could be an error in the map, so, yeah.
Richard is from Nebraska.
Oh, really, are you?
Yeah, so when it popped up and I saw it, I said, oh, this is a cool place, I actually drove out to see it, and it wasn't there.
There was no cord.
You just posted Bill.
Last thing, Bill, consider gaining it now that there's.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is discussion for release Lot 1, Greenwall Estates. Introduce yourself and tell us what we want, what you want us to do.
I'm Richard Henderson again, representing Mr. Tedeschi, and I was representing, but so far we're not closing, but in the course of the title examination, of course they sell the special permits, and also the purchase and sale agreement had some contingencies that is a condition of closing Mr. Hogan's home, which is the original house on the site, which is within the four corners of the subdivision, but is a pre-existing house with pre-existing utilities and a pre-existing access, but it was still covered by the covenant, and if he was selling the rest of his land, he didn't want to be involved in the subdivision process, and he made a condition of selling the rest of the development to Mr. Tedeschi to complete, that his home not be part of the subdivision process, so we're not asking for releases on anything that's undeveloped, and there are, there's progress being made in terms of utilities being put in, but we are asking that Mr. Hogan's lot be released, and he does have access, he does have utilities, Mr. Tedeschi has a covenant in his agreement that he cannot interfere with access during the construction of any part of the subdivision, cannot block access to his home, and I think John told me it's a matter of how many hours before from start to finish to upgrade the road?
Well, the road's well under construction, I started last week and I've been doing, you know, seven days, 12 hours a day, and I have the road all, it's all stripped down, the gravel's in place, drainage has been put in, bounds have been put out back, I, it's a common driveway, but unfortunately it falls under the flexible open space, so it actually does fall under the subdivision rules and regulations, it's essentially a common driveway, I have a plan here, unfortunately it's a working plan, but if anybody would like to see it, so they, I have an existing conditions plan as well, this gentleman, Mr. Hogan, actually has Lou Gehrig's disease, and he's got, he's really challenged on how to get around and everything, he has a walker that he uses, so it's really sort of a, just a touchy area to work, and I'm trying to not impact his life at all, he has a driveway, and the driveway is actually located where the road will be built, so it's what I'm doing is lining it up to where I'm just going to disrupt his driveway for 24 hours, to strip out the old driveway and actually bring in the gravel, just, just so he's not really interrupted by it, but again, it's such a small project, or, you know, in my perspective, that to pull a bond, it's, it's just, it's ridiculous, it's, they're so difficult, they take months to get, they're very costly, and in the two month period, I can actually build the entire subdivision and have it base coated, at that point, then I would come in front of the board for lot releases, and we'd come to an agreement on the amount of money that I would put into an account or a letter of credit or something of that sort.
This is a depiction of Mr. Hogan's home, which has always been here, this is his backland, and this is what Mr. Tedeschi has agreed to purchase, the road bed and the rest of the land, these are, these are a drainage lot and an open space lot, both of which will be for the benefit of the town, be open space, but this is the house as it exists today.
What is existing driveway, is that?
Yeah, I have an existing plan, that's a very deceiving plan.
The pavement is where his driveway is.
Right now, here.
His house is over here.
I actually have an existing, existing.
I mean, that's my only concern is just the access, you know, for release that he's got sufficient access to the house.
Here is, I think the existing condition plan is probably the best to look at as far as what exists now, and I also want to show you, Bill, you were on the board when this, this was approved back in 07.
06, actually.
Or 06, this is the driveway, and I have not disturbed this area just because I want to do it in a 24 hour period and not disturb this lot.
This is his house here.
This is his house here, now, if we go to, again, I'm sorry about this, a working plan, it shows, it shows a layout of a subdivision here, but that was waived and it was for frontage, if you look at the highlighted areas, it's just a common driveway for three house lots, and you can see his driveway is right here.
This is the picture, right?
Yeah, that's, that's the end of the pavement, this is about.
That would be right, right, you'll have the existing conditions, we'll show exactly. Right on the back of the garage.
So he's giving you an easement across the.
No, it's just a subdivision, it's a.
Title to that plan.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that works, how to build a road.
This one is, is kind of on a fast track.
Right.
And, and what's happening is, and I was a little concerned, I think I sent something around to the board, Mr. Hogan still owns this entire property, and he's living in Florida, so just to make sure everything was.
He's not living in Florida.
He's not living in Florida, he's living right here?
No, 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 he's living here.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry about that.
He doesn't go to Florida until the winter, and he also gave you a letter that I had permission to do the work out there.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to tell the board, that we do have a letter from him, that all of this is being done with his permission, and we're having the.
So he owns the whole.
He owns the whole entire parcel, correct, correct.
And the John.
What we got to do, they want to release Lot 1, so that basically, then he can continue on.
We can't have a closing until Lot 1 is released.
Right, exactly, he.
Lot 1 being his lot.
Right, his home, he will not sell the land to John and finish unless he knows he's released, so his home is free of the, because he's going to be divorced from the process and the responsibility, John is buying not only the land, but all the liability to finish the project.
Can't close until.
I have a release, right, that's, or other conditions that we're going to have to waive because we're never going to, people will accomplish that.
I mean, I don't see an issue with it, I mean, for one thing, he's got frontage right on Greenwall too, but in addition to the driveway, so it's not like, I mean, it's meant to protect people from buying a lot where they don't have access or utilities, and that's not the case in any scenario, he fronts Greenwald, so it's not an issue for me.
It's not, nor is it.
It's an existing structure.
Who was this picture taken, Laura, last week?
That's one that Jerry Preble took.
Oh, okay, right, 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 well, that was actually an inspection for the gravel, since then, there's this basin here and this basin, they're both done, and the road's filled with gravel now, so I'm, you know, I'm only a couple of weeks from a base coat of asphalt, so.
Yeah, I have a message from Jerry too, to please call him before you do all the work, so he can go out and inspect it.
Oh, absolutely, I'm not missing any inspections.
Okay.
I would never do that.
So what was that, yeah?
Thank you.
I, um.
We have a motion.
Thank you.
What I did is I took your statutory comment in there, deleted the one dealing with substitution security, and I just took the lower part and made up.
I think Laura's got her own motion ready, ready to go.
We had talked, let's see, we're just going to kind of cross out the second sentence here, just go with the first.
And just to be completely open and honest, because John is a neighbor. And just to be completely open and honest, because John is a neighbor of mine, should I recuse myself, or does it matter?
Well, um, I guess it's something to think about at the beginning, but now...
Well, I haven't done anything yet. Okay, I just, well, I'll just make that public, I'll make it public.
My understanding is it makes a difference if you're a neighbor of the property in question, not necessarily if you're a neighbor of the applicant, unless there's some business relationship, but...
Just wanted to be open about it.
But, yeah, it's good to disclose, but I don't think it matters.
Okay, well, I don't, I didn't really think it did either, but I wanted to be honest and transparent about it. All right, I move to release Lot 1 from the Dream World Estates covenant dated October 26th, 2006, and recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 33715, pages 62 through 65, signed in connection with the Dream World Estates definitive subdivision approved by the planning board on June 23rd, 2005.
That's it.
Second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, have a nice evening.
You, too.
Do we need to sign anything to release those lots?
I guess you'll see me in a few more weeks for the other law, when the work is done.
I have more vacation days left, so give me a call, and we'll know when you come.
Stop by any time.
What's being built on this little lot?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that smaller homes get built, they were laid out for very large homes, and everybody seems to want... I'm, I'm doing the infrastructure, I'm going to build a residential building, build a...
One for us and one for you.
And Susan's your wife, right?
Excuse me. Susan's my wife, correct.
What, what's your last name?
She, she told, she sold us our house.
Okay.
Oh, did she?
Yeah, 22-man lot.
All right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, small world, thank you, nice to see you. I wasn't sure the second page, there's a notary on this.
We're going to, we'll have your signatures on the list.
The idea of Lawson-style.
Yeah, oh, good for you, absolutely, with the Queen Anne, Queen Anne cape.
Yeah, and smaller, nothing huge, um, so, you know, it's, it's a nice piece of property, it, it was actually perfectly flat, I couldn't figure out why, and did a little research, and it turned out it was Lawson's horse racing track.
I've seen photographs of that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, somebody's telling me about that, too, they used to have a big oval there.
Yeah, which was kind of neat.
Yeah, you can still see some of it from the train, you ride the train, you can see the, the bank.
I used to actually play on that track when I was a kid, yeah, the concrete pads for the stables and stuff, whoops, we're still there. The whole thing, back in the 50s.
How's Robbie doing?
He's doing great, yeah, thank you.
He's there, got a job with, uh, Hingham.
She's teaching in Hingham, yeah, and she just got a, a long-term substitute job, too, she was kind of part-time, but now she's, she's going to be full-time after the first of the year, so that's, that's real good. Robbie is not having that much, um, luck yet, but he's got some, he's got a lot of irons in the fire.
She also picked it up tomorrow, was your, okay, all right, great, thank you again so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is that it for you this evening, you're off now?
I am, well, no, I'm not, I'm done here, so, good. Thank you. I'm going to pick them up tomorrow, John, I think.
Oh, okay, great, great, thank you so much.
Thank you, say hello to Susan. Hi, John.
Where's the pen coming back? Look at that, there it is.
Hey, I didn't lose it.
The next item on the agenda?
What's this, is that something we're supposed to do?
Oh, that goes with that, that's the notary.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is a letter of support for CPC for scenic road signs, I think you got the application that Laura put in for that. I had a question. It looks to me like I've got contingencies upon contingencies.
Some would just want contingency.
That's, that's...
Oh, you mean, uh, you mean contingency, money contingency?
Yes. I don't have it sitting in front of me, but we've got one, it's like $8,900, it has a contingency.
Yeah, um, there's the, the $8,900, and that's, that's based on one estimate that we got, which hopefully is still going to be good next year, and, um...
That's Al Bankard, can I, let me, let me show you exactly where it is.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think I know where it needs, where it goes up to 12 minutes, it goes up to 16.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's not like that money's going to be, you know, going anywhere if we don't need it, it just goes back into the CPC.
It says...
And, and I suppose we, we could trim it, it just seemed like, um...
Yeah, so, and this, this part, it's certain, it says that the, the, basically, the per sign or each blade is like 89.65, and then you came back up with the total based on the number of signs you were going to have, it's 89.65, 8,965, and then for contingencies, 12,500 is requested. And then it comes over here, it says total project cost, 16,000, 12,500 requested.
Bill, what that's all about is that, right now, the DPW is saying that they'll provide all the poles and all the hardware, which actually comes to about $3,500 for all the signs, but in case that doesn't wind up coming through, we wanted to allow for that, and then we got it to be, to be running up to that.
So, so what you're looking for is $16,000?
Yeah, I mean, in the CPC pot, you know, that's like, I don't want to call it a drop in the bucket, but it's, it's all kind of money.
Forty-seven signs, that seems like a lot of money, it just seems to be the contingency.
No, it's not, it's 100 signs.
It's 100 signs.
But it's 47 locations.
It's about, it's about 47 locations, but you have to do a double, double modded, and then you have to put them in that town, town lines.
Do we have a motion to support?
Nothing for me. Um, I move that we support the, the Citra, uh, so I move that we, as the Citra Planning Board, support the CPC application for the scenic road signs, um...
Second.
All the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is Al Bankard's request for sidewalk study, a multi-use trail, um, Al's not here tonight, and he's requested that we hold that discussion at our next meeting, so, I said that would be fine by me, and we will talk about those at the next meeting.
This is going to run on Countryway?
This is...
From where to where?
From Green Bush up to, up to the center of Fish Park.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, pretty long way.
It's actually, it's done in two phases, one is, is up to Huey Road, and then Huey Road down to the village.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's a fair amount of money, it's, it's almost a million dollars altogether.
So, from like Shones down to Green Bush?
Yep.
Be an interesting construction project.
Yeah.
It's very narrow road.
It is, with a lot, with, uh, trees and stone walls.
The only concern that I have, and we can talk about it when we do the actual vote, is that there will probably be multiple, it'll, it'll fit under recreation, and there will probably be multiple applications under recreation, and the question becomes is, if we endorse each individual, at some points, we're going to have to come back up and rank order them, so that we know which ones have a higher level of support, if that's the right way of putting it, than others. But, um, but going into the application, just for the initial hearings for CPC, it would have the initial support for the planning board, and then when they come back and we've figured out what the recreation ones are, then we'll, while bringing back, we can rank order them.
Okay, since, since we're talking about this real quickly, just the, since Countryway is a scenic road already, are there special considerations that we need to think about for the sidewalk, it's just that things can't be altered in a significant way, right?
Yeah, the, the stone wall would be one, and if there are any trees that have to be cut down that are in the road layout, I think before Stockbridge Road sidewalk, didn't they come in with an application, yeah?
Okay.
I mean, is that, does this then turn it into a joint application, like from the planning board and DPW, or is it just...
No, it's DPW, in effect, what we would do is we would, we'd be supportive of the project, if that was what the board decided.
But they could submit without our support?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Is, is this part of the sidewalk study project that was done a few years ago, or is this, so this is one of the phases?
They did the sidewalk study, and then they made recommendations of, and ranked ordered where the sidewalks would be the most desirable, and at that point, now we're looking at, or they, they are looking at to see how they fund those various components.
Okay.
And this, this ranked up high on the list of location.
Being able to walk down to the train station in Green Bush without taking your life in your hands is a, a good thing.
Or down to the beach?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a crazy road right there.
Gee, as long as it's not a sidewalk.
So, so when he comes in to talk to us, is he also going to, maybe we should go over the sidewalk study a little bit, too, and talk about...
It'd be good to get an update.
Get an idea of what the other alternatives are for support.
He's going to have a map and everything, he's going to, he's going to bring a map, um, of where, everything.
And what's been done.
Now, remind me that the, the Gannett Road sidewalk, or running path that's up there, that was a bike path, was, was, did that come out of a separate pot, is that part of this overall thing?
It's CPC money.
Which this is as well, isn't it?
This is, this has been CPC money. But I think recreation is coming in, I think because they changed the rules in CPC, it, it now allows us to, before, if the field wasn't constructed with CPC money, we couldn't work on it, but now it comes back up with the change in regs, and we can come back up and create fields, or we can modify, or we can do work on existing fields. So, the question becomes is, um, I know that recreation's got multiple projects that they're looking to bring in, and the question is, if this, how, how would you come back up and pick and choose between, say, a field, uh, work as opposed to a sidewalk work, so you, because you only have X number of jobs, that ultimately needs to be sorted out.
Are we going to see that together?
Who gets to assign priorities?
Well, when it comes back, if it comes back to the planning board, we'll bring it back to the planning board and have the, where we, where we have endorsed or not endorsed, we come back up and see.
Are there stated criteria that we apply to, to rank order these, these different projects?
Subjective.
There is right now, I understand that they are talking about working on that going forward, having some criteria for CPC to kind of have more of a master plan kind of concept about criteria versus more haphazard.
Because like the sidewalks, you know, that's a, in my mind, that's a health and safety issue, which would put it pretty close to the top.
Yeah, I, I think there were, there was talk about, um, you know, having priority of trails, you know, that connect and things like that versus just haphazard, and so I think, well, I mean, Bill's on that committee, I know I've heard several members talk about doing that going forward, so I think they're working on that.
So, is the idea, though, that if we look at the sidewalk for Countryway, we're going to have the benefit of not only what happened on the sidewalk study, but what the recreation people are already proposing, will we know that?
Well, this one is not through recreation, this one's coming in through DPW.
No, I know, but from the perspective of what we're...
We should know what applications that are in front of CPC, those will be, those will be available, they should be up on our website.
Yeah, ultimately, before town meeting, we'll know everything that is going to go up, and ultimately, it's all town vote, all the applications, so...
You know, I also have the PDFs of all the recreation applications, because Jennifer sent it to me, and I sent her this one, so I can send that around to everybody.
Yep. I think, I think they're going to do a final vote on them in the meeting after Wednesday, I think, of this week, Wednesday or next week, is that the 14th?
Which ones they accept and which ones they don't.
Which ones they're going forward with, I think, so...
Okay, I'll wait.
So, we're all set on that, um, next one is potential recommendation for Manlot Road as a scenic road, I guess Bobby, you're the one that brought that up?
I did, actually.
Surprised.
Well, don't be too surprised, um, it seemed to meet all the criteria that Laura had, had put out in, in our little email exchange, and certainly, uh, it's, um, an historic road, we've got, um, pieces of paper that are connected to our house that say Manlot was built sometime before 1700, laid out as an original path, at least the part of it down towards Countryway and the Baptist Church. So, um, there's some nice stone walls, a lot of it, well, not a lot, but a significant amount is bordered by, uh, the cemetery, you know, one of the oldest cemeteries in town, uh, parts, other parts of it are bordered by the Ellis Estate Conservation Land, um, so I think it's a prime candidate for all of those reasons.
There is that project along there, right, with the massive clearing of trees, is that what I'm thinking of?
Uh, not along Manlot, no.
I'm thinking of another street by there.
Not that I, no, not that I've seen.
Booth Hill.
Yeah, it must be Booth Hill then, you know, where there are the houses, kind of, that's up the hill.
Right, no, that's, that's Booth Hill, that comes up from the village center towards 3A.
Even a clear cut, you know, the whole forest in front of those houses, I, when you said that, I thought, you know, I'd like to prevent that going forward, on some of those side roads, if we can, but I, I guess the implications of making it scenic is then they have to come in front of us if they want to make changes to stone wall, trees within a certain area, and all of that, gives a little protection of the border area.
At least there's some review connected to it, yeah. But again, the town has to vote on that, as if...
The town has to vote, yeah, I, I think the, the process is, I understand, is we would come back up and put together an article and bring it up in front of town meeting, and then have town meeting vote.
Yeah, I, I guess the question, if, if we're going to look at that, should we be looking at any other roads, or do it all at the same time?
Very possibly, sure.
That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, very possible. Now, do, do the stone walls have to be historic, or can they be modern in order to, to qualify as a scenic road?
I think the intent was for them to be historic, historic ones.
Because I, you know, I've seen people out there building new stone walls along the, you know, along the property lines. Right. And it seems to me that, that, that you could, there's no reason why you might not want to exclude those, but I certainly understand why. I would think if you're building it along a scenic road, well, maybe if it's, maybe you have to get permission to build it in the first place, it's a scenic road, I don't know, but then it would probably, once built, have the same protection as the, as the ancient walls, seems to me.
So, I think, what I'm going to suggest is that we come back up and we advertise a public hearing, and hold a public hearing for the potential of adding additional roads, identifying addition, additional scenic roads, that would do it.
Well, I think you just want to be specific about specific ones.
Or we could make a proposal, otherwise it's kind of open-ended.
You know, not any board can propose them, it's the planning board, the CONCOM, or the Historic Commission.
I wonder if this is something we can talk to the Historic Commission about before we get too far, I mean, they may have a better idea than, we get to it quicker than we could.
Right, and there are maps of the town that go back at least to the early 1800s that would show you which roads existed in, in that period, for example, that would be a, a place to start thinking about.
I mean, maybe it's worth as simple as having, they'll write a letter, the Historic Commission's, they were considering looking at additional scenic roads, we'd like your input, and see if we can start a discussion, and then go from there.
That'd probably be a better way to get it, yeah.
What about, um, publishing some sort of invitation for proposals, you know, if someone is aware of one that we, just because it's on their, on their lot, they know about it, and know, but like, like, like Manlot Road, you live there, and, and you were driving down one day and realized, "Oh, this is a scenic road," well, maybe other people have done the same sort of thing, yes.
And we, we could put a little notice in the paper, and ask people to, you know, either, you know, call us in the office, or, or you, or...
See if we get the historical group to get involved.
Yeah, yeah.
It would almost be better to go to the historical group, say, "I think I have a scenic road, what do you think?" you know?
I mean, I think that, I think the danger of it is if, you know, you don't want, you want to do real, just legitimate ones, and not create unnecessary process for every time somebody wants to have a driveway, but, so, it seems like maybe we should get our...
Not to mention, you need more science.
Exactly.
But, but if, if we published a notice and said, "If you think you have a scenic road, go to the Historic Commission," and then they screen them, and then they come to us.
Yeah, send them to...
Yeah.
Or create some work for Historic Commission, that's...
And it'd be something they're already working on, so, we can either send a letter, or we can have our liaison talk to them.
Either way, yeah.
The liaison's choice, you want to send a letter, or you want to talk to them?
Um, I can send a letter, that's cool.
No, it's going to be your choice, you can either talk to them, or I'll send a letter.
Oh, you'll send, okay, um, why don't you send a letter? How's that for passing the buck? Whereupon, turns to Laura and says, "Write the letter, I'll sign it." Yeah, right.
Okay, so we've got that, uh, next item, minutes in the county?
All right, I move that we approve the minutes for the Citra Planning Board of September 27th, 2012, as well as the...
2012, as well as the minutes for October 11th, 2012.
Send out, so that it's one, send out by email.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I just do these all at once? All right. I move that we approve the four requisitions. The first one is for, let's see, total, $193.12 for color copies of the wind turbine reports for the selectmen, and mounting watershed protection district map for the fall town meeting.
Here it goes.
Okay, I'm waiting for a response. Also, for $444, or $440, excuse me, the dues to the American Planning Association for 2013, 260 APA professional dues, this also is 35 for the mass, 145 for the chapter, the AICP, and membership, which equals the 440 total. Also, $75 for the Mass Association of Planning Directors, and the annual dues for 2012, 2013 for the town planner, Laura Hawbottom. And last but not least, $36 for 11x17 color maps for the master plan copies, for their, for the new member, an extra copy that you cannot reproduce in-house, or you cannot reproduce these in-house.
Yeah.
So that's $36.
Is that it?
Why give a...
We don't have a color copy for 11x17s.
Oh.
Second?
Is that right?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd have to send the...
Three signatures. Goes around... Next item on the agenda is town meeting reports, we'll, let's hold off on that one. I added, when, at the beginning of the, the meeting, we added an item, discussion on the watersh, the water protection district. On it, we have, as you know, we have a bylaw that's going up in front of this, this upcoming special town meeting on it. What we've done, Laura, identified that, if you recall at the last, when we actually voted, that we made a change that basically put in language that was dictated by the DEP, that basically asked that there would be no variances allowed on the 20, on the 20% impervious surface for the various properties. What we found is that there are a number of these properties that would be affected, that to, to maintain the 20%, or not to exceed the 20%, may preclude them from putting on an addition to their house, or doing some work of that nature. So what I'm gonna suggest that we do is we, we IP the existing article and resolve, make sure that we understand exactly what the impact is on people that are in the areas that are being added to the water protection district.
But is that mandated by the state, though, that change?
It's, it's mandated by the state, but what we don't know what that really means to the, the property owners. If we come back up and we vote it, does that mean, is that, is there any way that, is that preclude them from doing anything to the lot that they would currently be able to do?
So in terms of grandfathering, kind of, kind of...
Well, that's what we don't know, whether they would be grandfathered or not, right? So the question is to really understand what it is, it's gonna take probably longer than between now and Tuesday to sit there and figure it out. So rather than do something that, that impacts their rights, that, that we may be able to obviate that impact, rather than going forward, what we do is we go forward with the annual as opposed to the special.
Is that gonna get us in touch with the, the officials of the state if we don't do this immediately?
Yeah, that was my concern, is the time, does the timing work?
It is up to...
Well, Al, Al doesn't think so. We talked about it today, and he thinks that this permit extension act applies to the town's water withdrawal permit, which I wasn't sure about that, but, but he's pretty sure that it does, so.
My personal take on it, I think it's too risky for that type of concern, we could always remedy it later at annual town meeting, but if we're talking about possibly jeopardizing a water withdrawal permit over that question, I, I think we can't risk that.
Yeah, unless you know for sure right now.
Yeah, I mean, the worst that can happen is somebody's impacted and they can't expand their driveway, or whatever it is, and maybe we could address that at annual, but...
Yeah, with a modification.
During the discussion, when we went forth and we were working on the article, if, what we, we opted to bring it in front of the special rather than waiting for the annual, but we could still wait for the annual, and still not, not impact the water withdrawal permit.
Well, that's what we're not sure about.
Are we certain of that?
That part, we are sure of. I mean, at the beginning, there was this big pressure to, to do something in, in a short period of time, and then as we got going, it came out that, Laura, it became clear that, that wasn't, that wasn't necessary, and that the annual would be fine, and that, you know, probably even a year from the annual would be fine.
Oh, it is.
Oh, really?
Well, in that case.
That's what we should do, then.
Yeah.
Because you'll have more people at the annual, among other things.
And, and we also have the other change, that's not the water regulations, but the, for the village overlay district that we pulled this time.
Right, yeah, so we...
As long as it doesn't jeopardize the water withdrawal.
Just now we had this mad scramble to get this together.
Right.
Just a little while ago.
There was the initial thought, and then, you know, I, I think once we got pretty far into it, and the Water Resource Committee was, was behind it, and the Water Department was behind it, and so on, it seemed like, well, even though we don't absolutely have to do it immediately, we might as well go ahead and do it, because all the wheels are in motion.
Okay.
And then this issue came up about the, the people with the loss that should be...
Well, if we're sure we have time, then there's no reason not to push it off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where I'm, I'm coming down on it, because when we originally started, we sat there and we were, we figured we were under the gun to do it, and we'd have to do it under the special. Then it came back out and found that we had additional time, so we sat there and says, look, let's continue with the special, and then if there's any issues that we can come back up and work that. But the, the way it is now is if we do it at the annual town meeting, we have the ability to come back up and pass it, resolve this issue, and still not, not impact an article withdrawal permit.
That sounds good.
So what I would ask for is a motion to recommend IP the article at the special town meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just need three, right?
Yeah. I need three, three signatures. Thank you. So I think that, I think that makes sense to do that, so we will do that. I've already talked with Joan Norton, the Chair of the Board, Selectman, and indicated that there's a possibility that, that we would do that, and he said that he would support whatever decision that we would make. So, and then Al is aware of our, the potential of us doing that, and DPW was aware. Having said that, next item on the agenda is town meeting reports, which we now have to modify to reflect our voters this evening. Okay. When will we, we file those? Will we file those tomorrow? My concern is to let advisory know and formally notify the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator of what our vote was.
Yeah, I'll, we'll do a memo, you know, to, a letter to Kathy Cowan, and then we'll come be honest.
Okay, good. The next item is the Economic Development Commission scheduled their meeting. You recall they, they come back up, they come in and report to us, and then they also report to the Board of Selectmen, so I think they would be, just about this time maybe, for them to come in for their discussion.
And they just went in front of the Selectmen a couple weeks ago, so...
Oh, good.
So I think where they, where they are in terms of their, their studies, their analysis, so I didn't have them come in, so I don't know what the Board wishes, what timeframe the Board wishes to have them come in.
I, I think the sooner the better, I mean, they, they did a report to the Selectmen about the results of the townwide survey, and had some really interesting information on that. I think it'd be helpful for us to hear that, I, I'm assuming they're probably, they obviously prepared for that presentation, so it's just a scheduling thing, if we can get them in here to top us as well.
Sure.
Can I suggest that we have them not at the next meeting, but the meeting after?
Yeah, it sounds like the 20th is pretty full.
Yeah.
So first, first December meeting?
It would be our first December meeting. You write them a note?
Yeah.
And that would be good. Town Planner Report six.
Let's see, I alluded earlier to the fact that Tricia has us doing the budget the same way as the past couple of years, where we really need to be imaginative about, you know, what kinds of things, you know, we all want to accomplish in the next year. So I put out there, if you're thinking about grants, you know, are there particular areas you're thinking about grants for? That might be one thing. Another thing that, that, you know, I know you all have started on is the master plan. If you want to really get that done, you might want to consider hiring an outside firm to do it, because I think you do get, you know, a different type of product when you do that. You get somebody who can be maybe objective, or give you a, a new perspective, or a different perspective than just our own, you know, we have all our own perspectives.
This is master plan update, you're talking about?
Yeah, this would be an update.
And, and you're saying there's, there may be grant money available to, to hire somebody to do that?
Well, I didn't actually say that, no. That's okay.
You know...
We were hoping you were going there.
Yeah.
It's an opportunity to say that.
This, this is budget request, right?
Well, if it were, you know, if it were honest, I would, you know, I would, but I mean, I, I don't think we can really say that. What they did in Marshfield was they went to town meeting, and they actually got, you know, got a big chunk of money funded for their master plan. I think they got something like $113,000 or whatever it was.
This is not the facilities master plan that's already been funded.
This is, this is...
For, for $113,000, I'll do the math.
It's basically, well, it's what we did last year.
I'll do it for a hundred.
Well, it's what we tried to do last year.
Yeah.
An update as much as possible that Nico kind of coordinated, when we were all doing our own sections.
Yeah, I mean, this I think would be something, you know, a little different from what we can all accomplish on our own.
Well, it would be done by a, by a professional person who has the appropriate initials after their name and all that kind of stuff.
And they're, they're devoted to that, and that's what they do.
Yeah, they can get it done within a timeframe, it's reasonable.
And I think particularly if there's interest in, in doing some planning around CPC, which is, which is fabulous to hear, that the town is really thinking about doing that, you know, you really want to have that built into a plan where you get public input, and you're really looking at what the long-term goals should be for the town, you know, for the town's physical development and...
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I thought two things, the CPC I think needs a plan, I'm not sure if we originate that budget request, or CPC does, I picture that being sort of like a separate plan.
Yeah, CPC could actually find that out.
Just thinking maybe it could be tied, you know, maybe...
Oh, yeah, yeah, you should use the results of their plan and sort of feed it into the master plan.
I mean, I, I'm obviously more concerned about economic development, and we had our request last year that we didn't get. I still think that's absolutely essential, and, I mean, I, I do feel like, while the master plan's important, I don't think that it's something that we tend to look at very often, whereas if we focus on something like economic development again, and have something we can actually hit the ground running with and make some, I still think that's the number one priority. I mean, everything in town right now is all about all these giant capital projects, and there's been very little focus on how to pay for them.
It's a great dovetail of that, yeah.
How we're gonna pay for them.
I, I think it's just critical that, that if we're gonna spend money, we need to invest it in how to raise revenue for the town, and...
Well, I agree.
So I, I'm more of the mind that we request, again, what we didn't get last year, and go after that, so we can actually do the study, which we were talking about, I think it was a $40,000 in two stages, right?
That was the...
We had priced out.
The Georgetown similar stu, type study, right?
Was it Georgetown?
Well, you used the example for Georgetown.
Yeah, Georgetown was an example.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we priced it out, we had the, what the MAPC looked at it, I mean, we know what it costs from other towns, this is a tangible thing, we presented it to the Selectmen, they denied us. I, I mean, I think that's gotta be the number one priority still. Now, are we going to, last year, we sort of submitted that somewhat on our behalf and somewhat on behalf of the Economic Development Commission. Are we still gonna submit them as part of our budget, or do you think they should submit separately, or...
Oh, I, I think they're, they're doing their own thing with, with the budget.
They're doing their own, okay. Well, I just want to make sure that gets in there somewhere, and...
You don't want to duplicate efforts here, either, right?
I don't want to, I don't want to duplicate efforts, but it's almost sort of like a cosponsored thing. I mean, we, we requested it last year and didn't get it, and I still think it's the number one priority, so I, I kind of feel like maybe we should.
Well, I know they're working with MAPC again this year to try to go after some form of a market analysis that they would do, and there are some other options for them, there's some software that they can buy that Esri, sorry, that one of their competitors puts out, which I've seen the reports, and there's, you know, very detailed market demand that comes out, you know, of their, of their results. It's called Community Analyst, and that only, it's, it's $4,000, but it takes somebody grinding through all the numbers.
Yeah.
But they have a lot of data that can be used, that, you know, that they access.
Yeah, I mean, it seemed to me the studies we looked at last year that other towns have done, and that MAPC suggested are exactly what we needed for the town. I mean, it, it seemed like the obvious choice, it's what's done by other towns successfully, and I know the EDC will report on this when they come to us, they did to the Selectmen too, but one of the questions was, you know, do you support development on 3A? And it was, the vast majority of people did, so that's sort of like the, one of the primary questions, but I don't think you can really look at that without some professional analysis and...
Yeah.
Impact, how to make, do it the right way and all of that.
Well, if you think of the 3A corridor...
Pardon? No, no, you go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, if you think of the 3A corridor as it runs through Situate, there's gonna be limited areas that can be developed.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's a lot of wetlands, there's a lot of town owned land, the town, the town forest, the, the Ellis Estate land.
That's what we need to find out.
Yeah, somebody really should take that in hand and find out what we've, what we've got to work with.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think you're right, the biggest motivator here is that we're now sort of stepping it up another level, this facilities master plan, and how much money is involved in trying to accomplish those kinds of things without some additional re, you need the revenue balance on something like that, and I just, I think it brings a bigger emphasis to economic development.
Yeah, we clearly can't make it up with, you know, giant development projects, it's not gonna happen in Situate, but, but to not be looking at that at the same time we're looking at the other things, we have the, the gate studies coming up for about $750,000 for the study, probably, you know, $40,000, $50 million if the project goes through, it's split with the state, I know, that's, that's huge. The library project, I guess, they got their, they got their $5 million, but that's subject to the town coming up with, I can't remember what it is.
I think it's another...
I think it's seven, I want to say, but it's a significant amount of money, so, and this capital need thing is not gonna end anytime soon.
We haven't even talked about seawalls yet. We haven't even talked about sea walls yet.
So, so I just feel like, you know, not having that study that happen is a real travesty not to get that going.
Which comes to my question, what can we do to effe- effectively advocate or sell the need for this?
We need to request it again and we need to advocate for it. I mean, we requested it once. It didn't get it and we need to.
Or support CPC in their request.
They're, they're really interested in spearheading it for themselves and I think that when they were in here before the selectmen, that they definitely made a point of talking about that. And as they were talking about it, you know, Tricia kind of, um, mentioned that this year they got nine thousand dollars. They're looking for fifteen from MAPC. And then she seemed to suggest that they had a very good chance of getting another nine for the following year. So you put those two nines together, that's eighteen and fifteen. So you get, you know, sort of thirty-three.
It's very frustrating to me because we're talking about such a small amount of money. I mean, we're, the projects we're talking about for, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar study. Uh, what's in front of us for CPC funds, just the sidewalk thing you're talking, you know, over half a million dollars in two phases. We're, we're looking for forty thousand dollars to try to raise revenue for the town. It's just, I, I can't understand why that.
Can it become part of the seven fifty?
It can unfortunately because the, um, the MSB requires the staff funding be separated out as its own line item.
It's MSBA money, money.
But in the scheme of things, I mean, to look at a forty thousand dollar study to potentially raise revenue for the town when we're spending millions of dollars on capital projects, it seems like a drop in the bucket. Seems like a no-brainer. I'm shocked we didn't get it last time.
I, I think it's definitely something you should explore with them.
I mean, I think we should request that as our budget priority from the planning board.
It can't be part of the seven fifty because that's Mass School Building Authority, but it could possibly be part of the three seventy-five if somebody wanted to release it.
The three seventy-five is the facilities master plan?
Facilities master plan.
That would make a perfect sense to me. I mean, because that sounds like it's gonna be such a big demand on capital.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, but it might be a possibility. I think they might be tying those pots of money together somehow to.
No, I don't think, I don't think you can do that.
Okay.
Has there been any meeting of the master plan group?
Not that I know of. Bill, you were a liaison.
Not, no meetings yet.
I mean, the, the way to think about it is if you're going to master plan for new facilities for the town, at the same time, another component of that master plan should be how are you gonna pay for it?
Exactly, yeah.
We're just gonna identify the cost and what needs to be done.
Right, exactly.
And it's clearly, it's a long-term prospect. I mean, there's not gonna be any, you know, magic bullet that's gonna solve the revenue.
You're not bringing AMC here tomorrow.
But we can make a dent in it and it's a long-term process. So the sooner we get that direction out there, and that kinda ties into the master plan, like instead of spending, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand on overdoing the whole master plan, I'd rather see smaller amount of money focused on the immediate need for now.
I agree, yeah. I'd certainly support that.
Yeah, I would too, particularly in the economic.
And with the facilities money, the one thing I was thinking about is that if it could be, like, we're, you know, the idea that we're kind of rearranging some of the facilities around, that part of that, not tied to the school per se, but if there was, like, again, where the, the new junior high is, I think, proposed to be behind here, right? Then could this become some type of retail small in the front, like where the town hall and the city or, and the police station are? Could that be some kind of combination that you could use there? Like, I guess what I'm saying is proposing not only a school or a campus as they were saying, but some kind of retail to fund it.
Potentially a grocery store.
Or whatever.
I think you're gonna have, really want, you're gonna want to do the entire stretch of three A from border to border, including probably the villages, North Situate and Green Bush.
Definitely like Green Bush.
And just evaluate what's, what's there. And this site will be one of the sites. There'll be, you know, there'll be a series of.
Well, I think the studies too that they were looking at, it's a couple of phases. One is sort of identifying, um, what businesses would fit in Situate that we don't have. What we can attract. There's limitations there. And then the next step is, you know, where are areas that we should look at? Possible rezoning or expanding business areas or things like that. So it's a, sort of a holistic look at it. But it's, it's a jumping off point for getting things going and without that, I think, we can talk about as much as we want, but we need some kind of concrete numbers to point at, say this makes sense, this doesn't.
Right.
Really?
And, and I understand for the seven hundred and fifty that's at the special town meeting next week, um, the selectmen are saying that they have that money available out of existing funds, which I don't know how that's possible, but, you know, everyone's talking about we needed the overrides for this and that, but they're saying that the seven hundred and fifty is basically in, I don't know, for the free cash or other funds we have, but they're saying we don't need to borrow. So to me, asking for forty thousand dollars should be a no-brainer.
Well, um, excuse, pardon me, I guess what I'm trying to say is that, you know, we asked for the money last year. They said no. If we ask for the money this year and we need it even more than we did last year, the, how do we, how do we get past no to yes?
We do a hundred, we do a hundred signature petition and we do it, you know, outside of the point.
Okay, so that's what it's gonna take.
Why did they say no last year?
But we're also conjecturing in terms of what economic development is, is requested or what they've, they've got their preliminary discussions on, so.
Yeah.
Then, then I think it could be an item on the, our, their meeting with us is that what have they requested? What do they think they need? Right? And how can we help offer that?
Right, but I think in general, I think the board supports the position of if there is some type of priority that the economic development and some of these other studies may take priority over updating the master plan. I certainly would agree with that.
Yeah.
Dan, that seven fifty is gonna be reimbursed about fifty percent by the state, so it's really only three seventy-five that we need to come up with. Yeah, exactly.
I think it's a forty percent.
Well, it's forty's, forty's the base, but it'll, it can creep up depending on what, you know, what you do with it.
The other items? Got a motion for Bob.
You hear me?
Oh, you know what? I had one thing too.
Well, you had the liaison reports, right?
Oh, I am, sorry.
Um, so on October eighteenth, I went to the South Shore Coalition Meeting, which is a, the subdivision of the MAPC. Uh, they did a really nice, uh, presentation on transit oriented development, which I sent to Laura and she subsequently sent out to all of you. Um, I actually did ask the question tying in economic development to MAPC, saying what could we do as a planning board to try to, um, enhance or, uh, create development around these transit centers? And a lot of it was about zoning is what they said. And I think we, we've kinda done all the things that we can do to some degree. I talked about like an RFP, as we've mentioned about for an apartment community or maybe for retail. And they said that they weren't that familiar with having like the actual that coming from the planning board. So mostly they, I mean, his response was mostly the planning boards tend to like help create the zoning and the, like, like as we've done the village overlay districts and so forth. But there were some really good examples. If you do have a chance to read through that PDF, um, about, uh, in general, like North Situate is considered to be a village center, um, in their mind that that has potential. Uh, Green Bush is actually undeveloped, which makes sense. Um, so there's a lot more, um, potential for sort of shaping the development maybe around Green Bush. Uh, and that Situate is classified as a, I think what they said, maturing suburb. So it's actually, but yeah, I was kinda surprised by that too. Was that in, in some cases, it's becoming sort of more saturated with the development according to their studies. So there's all this information that you can read through, but, um, it was quite interesting. And in fact, um, they mentioned that if they ever wanted to, if we wanted to have a presentation by the, the people that create or did the, the, that study, um, that they would be happy to come in and present to the board at some point. So just, I'll throw that out there if you'd like that. Um, there's a couple other things that were thrown out there as far as transportation planning with the MBTA. There was actually a meeting tonight in Quincy, um, which I would've liked to gone to, but it was basically to hear kind of the gripes maybe about why, you know, we lost weekend service and, um, some of the other issues around, you know, transportation planning on the South Shore. There's something coming up, I'm thinking, two weeks about expanding South Station. And I'm planning to go to that, uh, I think it's like on a Monday night, the nineteenth.
Expanding South Station rail?
Uh, yes, the, the South Station facility so that that could, uh, enhance South Coast Rail and potentially have more service for the three lines that are the, the old colony lines, so the Plymouth, uh, Middleborough and Green Bush.
And you're a train guy, so that's.
Yeah, so I thought it was good.
I thought they were pretty much landlocked by the post office.
Well, the, the post office would be relocated. Actually, the postal service wants to relocate to South Boston. And so that would open up that facility for redevelopment.
Yeah.
That's the plan of the potential.
Yeah, they've been talking about that one for a long time.
I know, I know, yeah, it's all in the, but anyway, they, they're starting to have meetings on it, so I've been kind of, uh, focused or, uh, interested in that. The other thing I wanted to mention was the historical society. I, you were copied on a couple of emails about this. I realized that, I don't know why it took me so long, that I'm like, I'm not going to these historical society meetings because they were on the exact third Thursday of the South Shore Coalition Meetings. So I was wondering if maybe someone else would like to pick that up, maybe Steve, if you would like to be the liaison or?
Happy to try.
I don't wanna, you know, put something that you're not interested in, but just as a thought, 'cause I, I feel bad that I'm not going to one since they're conflicting, so.
Be happy to give it a try, you know?
Okay.
You own it.
Don't know anything about it.
You own it.
The other thing is that through a, a conversation I had with, uh, the Historical, um, Commission, is that they said that they would be willing to come into the planning board at some point and also present some of their ideas, um, and about historical resources. So.
Maybe there's scenic roseland.
You were copied on that as well. So again, just to throw that out there, that we might wanna schedule something, so. Those are my liaison updates.
I, I really like the idea of having collegiate organizations, whatever they might be, the, the Historical Commission, the other group that you talked about, coming in and at least coordinating, you know, and so that we, we understand what they're doing, they understand what we're doing and, and, uh, and so we don't find ourselves working on cross purposes.
Or, you know, we're helpful to one.
And, and we're, and perhaps able to share resources, which can be really good.
Well, with your permission, I, I can work maybe with you to set up a time, um, for them to come present, uh, depending on what we have open.
Sure.
If that's okay with everyone.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's great. I said two really quick thoughts. One about, we were talking about the master plan for the CPC. There may be a way for the CPC to get money from the CPC to do that, I'm thinking, 'cause they've gotten money for studies before, like Gates for Historic. Maybe they can, you know, someone could put in an application for that, handle it that way. That way it doesn't come out of the general budget. That's sort of a master plan for CPC priorities.
I'm sure that, actually now that you mention, I'm sure that they could do that.
I think that would be the way to get to that and use.
Is there, is there any reason, I'm sure there is, I just can't think of it, why we can't fund the, the Economic Development Commission study out of CPC from up against?
Uh, doesn't fit the criteria.
That's why I'm just asking, is there some way we can shoehorn that in?
Recreation a formal housing.
Modify the fund of it.
Well, you know, how are we gonna pay for recreation and for, I don't know.
But that's a nice way to kind of, um, fund it out of CPC and then maybe the results of that give us a jump start on the master plan eventually. I can kinda segue into that 'cause I can look at recreation and historic and all that. The other, the other quick thing I had is that, um, I ran into an article about the, um, medical marijuana passing in Massachusetts and there's been, I don't know, there's probably five different towns that have been very proactive already about, about what they wanna do. And I don't really have any opinion about it. It's just something to think about right now, but, um, some towns are talking about, um, you know, if you don't do anything at all with your zoning, it's a commercial use. It can go wherever commercial uses are. Some towns are trying to actually keep it out of their town entirely. Other towns are just saying, should we treat this like a sensitive use where you zone it to a limited area in town and things like that? And, um, it might be something we wanna think about.
I mean, would it, you, wouldn't you get it through a pharmacy?
No, it's a separate dispensary.
They're gonna have medical dispensaries, which is a separate building where they grow it and they dispense it.
Oh, my gosh.
And there's gonna be thirty-five of them, I think, by next year. And there, I think it's limited to like five, I don't know, there's limits, like five per county or something like that, but, but if you don't do anything with your zoning code, it's just like a retail use. I, it's my understanding. So it could go in any of our commercial business districts. So it's just something to think about and maybe we, I can give you this law if you want, if you're interested. But, um, there's been a few towns that have been very proactive and I think have already adopted changes to their zoning to address this and I really don't know enough about it to have a preference about how.
Are they mostly trying to prevent it or are they just trying to direct it?
I think there's a couple that are actually trying to keep it out of their town entirely, tying into the federal laws or something.
Well, like Eric mentioned, the one I heard about in Quincy was that it, they couldn't be like fifteen hundred feet to a school, to a church. I think there was, those are the church, school.
And housing developments.
Something like, yeah. Oh, no, also next to a bar, an existing tavern or something like that. Like they couldn't be right next door.
There, there's some towns I think that are discussing, do you treat it like, um, an adult use category, which is very narrow zoning. This is the only place you can have it. Um, but some we might wanna look into a little bit, just get a feel because I, I don't wanna be surprised a year from now. And, um, to me, if one went in like on Front Street where one of the really offices is, that's not something I would be supportive of.
Wouldn't be happy. Are, are, are these, could these be serious revenue generators?
Potentially, yeah.
You know, so that, that's my question is that if, you know, we're, we're looking for ways to generate income and tax it revenue and so forth and.
Yeah. I mean, that was one of my first thoughts.
I, I have real divided thought, you know, mixed feelings over this, but.
I, I mean, you know, that's one of the things. Do you say, you know, yes, we allow them and they're only gonna go on this area of three A and it kinda keeps it away from the residential areas? And it's, um, because you're, I imagine you're gonna get a certain amount of out of town, you know, people. There's not gonna be a, a lot of them. There's not gonna be one on every corner, so there is gonna be a traffic thing. There's talk about whether it would, um, I just don't know. They just don't know what the effects are gonna be. We can look at places like Colorado that have these and what's worked there and what hasn't. But I just feel like we should be a little proactive about it so we don't get caught off guard.
That'd be a good question for the EDC.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that's.
Maybe over where the rest of the medical buildings are.
Maybe.
And just quickly.
Maybe down by the turbine where that, those people can't live anymore because they're getting sick.
But why would it generate revenue? I'm just curious.
Uh, 'cause it's commercial property. It's like commercial property taxes.
Okay.
Just like anything.
It wouldn't have a city revenue sales tax or no?
Right, exactly.
I mean, it could, it could, uh, if we adopt the meal tax, it could, you know?
Well, you know, it, it does make you hungry, so if we adopt the meal tax. I'm, I'm kinda thinking of it the same terms as the liquor stores or over the, when you go to New Hampshire.
It's getting late, so, but I, I just think, I just wanted to raise it that it's something that we should probably talk about and kinda see what other towns are looking at and, and just, um, be a little proactive about it. Versus, you know, you hate to, in hindsight, say, why didn't we adopt something?
And I apologize for my ignorance, but do we have zoning currently for an adult entertainment district in Situate?
I don't know if we do or.
No, the, the selectmen, you know, certain selectmen have been very, um, like, concerned about it as an issue. I mean, it's something that's been on the town's radar for a long time, but we just haven't really done it.
No, but they've never been turned enough to bring it forward as the term suggests.
Well, most towns have it. I mean, the thing is you can't, you can't not allow it.
Right, constitutionally.
But you can restrict certain areas within reason and most towns put it in an industrial area or something like that, that you're sure you're away from schools and. And that's kind of the conversation about the medical marijuana dispensaries is that, do you wanna do that or do you wanna say, you know, we're open for business and let's not worry about it? And then, yeah, maybe it's a potential revenue generator. And I don't really know where I fall on that. I'd like to kind of see, it's obviously been in a lot of other places, California, Colorado, places like that. There's plenty of examples to look at and I just haven't done that.
And, and we still don't know how the, how the, you know, federal law enforcement's gonna respond to this, you know, the local federal guys.
Yeah.
I really don't wanna be raided by the DEA.
Or anybody else.
Yeah.
Should we revisit this in a couple, you know, a couple of weeks or should we, you know, decide now if you're, if we're interested in reselling it or not?
Well, I think, Laura, what I was thinking about is that, um, I'm not positive about the timing of it, but I think, um, now it goes to the, uh, I don't know, the Department of Health or whatever. The state level has to come with regulations by a certain day.
It's the same department that had the, the, the woman that worked in the drug lab.
Yes.
So if there's been, I saw a report on that, that they were, there was some concern there as well, but.
So they're coming with reg- regulations, but there is a timeline and it's pretty quick. And so my thought is it would be nice to maybe reserve a spot for the spring, you know, annual town meeting and see if we can come up with something to get ahead of it, if, if there is something that we wanna do. And I don't know what the timeline is. It seems like we usually have to finalize things. We get a spot reserved before the end of the year. It's pretty quick.
It'd be coming up pretty quickly.
But you don't have to have it finalized. Do you have the actual language? You have to have it pretty close?
No, but, um, well, uh, now that the town meeting is gonna be in April, yeah, I, I guess we'd, we'd have like another month of leeway. So, yeah, I think we'd be wanting to decide what articles are gonna go forward by the end of the year.
Hmm. So it seemed like we'd need a fair amount of sort of background research on it in order to even make that decision.
The timeframe, but.
Well, or, I mean, I could be wrong. I don't think that probably Situate's in the crosshairs immediately. But something maybe like not for twenty thirteen town meeting, but maybe it could be twenty fourteen town meeting.
But that's what I don't know, 'cause I think the timing's pretty fast on when it's allowed. I think it's next year.
No, as far as.
Maybe we could even try for the fall town meeting again. I don't know if that's, you know.
Pretty clear they don't like, well, their current thinking is they don't want zoning.
Yeah.
Right.
But that could be something to change.
I mean, it could be a simple, it could be a simple of a change in the zoning by law to say, you know, this category of use is only allowed in Green Bush, for example. I mean, it wouldn't have to be this elaborate plan of, it could, we could just decide that we don't want it on Front Street or we don't, you know? It could be so- a simple change like that initially and further study, but.
I think you'd, you'd have a lot of public input though. You'd, you know, it's, it's gonna be a process of hearings and, and getting consensus and, yeah.
But I, I think the risk is that if you don't do that, then there could be one here by, I'll have to look at the article, but it could be next summer.
Yeah.
And we could kinda miss the window.
Yeah, I hear that.
And I'm not sure that would be a bad thing necessarily, but I don't wanna be surprised when people go, oh, if we'd only done what these other towns are doing. They're all scrambling, a bunch of, well, not, there's five or six that actually, I think they adopted stuff before the vote even happened or almost concurrently with the vote, so.
And the closest one being Quincy?
Complicated question.
I don't remember. It's in the articles. Milton, I think, was real proactive and, um, well, I'll, I'll look into it a little more. Maybe Laura can tell and we'll see what we come up with.
You think Cohasset, did you hear about that drug deal that's happened at the Stop and Shop? It's like this huge South Shore drug ring. Who knew?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
They, they were saying that, um, that Eric was talking about, like, uh, there can be an additional burden on the police, I guess, because, um, they pull someone over, if they have a certain, I guess you get IDs in most states or something and it's, it makes policing it more difficult and there's a potential impact on town services.
Yeah.
If one comes into your town and I, I just don't know how much is, you know, anything new like that. You always have that, you know, fear like of the worst, which are probably, but it, it's been tested in other states.
Yeah, there's some places, it's been there for, for a few years.
California for a long time, I think.
Well, do you have that information that you gave Laura electronically?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's just an article. It's not really.
I mean, I'm seeing which ones, uh, want to avoid having it.
There's not much there right now. It's just a quick article talking about some towns that have done some things.
Have you seen any estimates of how many people are actually gonna qualify for this under the medical, you know, exemption, restriction, whatever?
I, I think.
Is it hundreds of thousands of people that can't possibly?
Virtually a hundred percent of the people that live through the sixties.
What it sounded like is that the, the, um, what passed was so vague, they're kind of leaving it up to the state regulator, regulators to determine how that program's gonna look. So it's kinda wide open right now. And I think they're gonna look at other states. they're gonna look at other states' programs and, and see, but it's, um, it, it's largely unknown right now until they go through the whole regulation process.
I imagine that the zoning requirements will look a lot like a commercial bakery, won't they?
It's, it's for people that are in chronic pain or that are dying or that-
Well, cancer is a good one, people that are on chemotherapy.
Not anybody's gonna be able to just go in there with a fake license or something.
No.
No, but my understanding, places like California, I mean, if you have back pain, you can get a prescription and you can, you know, I have, I have back-
It just depends on what your doctor write the prescription for.
Yeah, it's not, it's not difficult in most of those states to get it, is my understanding, it really is hundreds of thousands of people.
Mm-hmm.
And it, it depends on the regulations, because the law, the way that they put it on the ballot this time was very vague.